Okay. Excuse me. Calling the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Wednesday, July 5th to order. And let's start with a roll call.
Mr. Patches?
Present.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Bryce?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Ling Alice?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
And Mr. Schollman?
Here.
As far as seating goes, we have two alternates with us this evening. They can both be seated for the entire meeting. And we just some preliminary remarks. We just underwent close to 10 hours of public hearings in our last two meetings. And I wanted to say just a couple of words about that. And if we can get through the other materials this evening in a timely manner, perhaps we can discuss this further. But with with regard to the timing of the public hearing regarding the draft regulations, you may recall, I hesitated just a little bit about the hearing being held in September. And the point I wanted to make is although we hope to be able to make necessary changes and approve new zoning regulations by September, if we're not ready to do so in September, or if we're not ready to do so by October or November or later than that, we we simply won't hold that public hearing until we are all comfortable that we have the best set of regulations for the city of Norwalk. Again, I'm still hopeful that may that we can accomplish that by the end of September. But I'm I'm not overly concerned if if we can't. It will simply take us the time it takes to accomplish the work we have in front of us. On the issue of upzoning, while I can't speak for all of you, I'm reasonably confident that we can come up with a satisfactory resolution that our various communities will find acceptable. And I'm hoping, as I said before, that we can find the time this evening to begin the dialogue among ourselves. And with that, we have review and action on applications, the first being 2023-32 SP slash CAM, City of Norwalk, One Meadow Street Extension. This is a preliminary review for the construction of a new South Norwalk Elementary School. And I believe Attorney Blank, you're going to lead the charge on this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Adam Blank from Norwalk. I'm the attorney for the City Board of Ed on this new South Norwalk Elementary School application. It's a special permanent CAM site plan. This is your first look. We're going to just have a couple of the team members give you very brief presentation tonight. And then, and of course, we can answer any questions you have, or at least be prepared to answer those questions for a subsequent public hearing or or additional preliminary meeting, if that's necessary. But we're hopeful that after our presentation tonight, that you can schedule us for a public hearing at one of your upcoming meetings. With me tonight is Edward Wodowski. He's the architect from Tekton Architects. He'll give you a brief overview of the architecture and planning for the for the school. Kristin Mitchell of Langdon is the landscape architect. She'll overview the landscaping. Chris McLean of Langdon is also is the traffic engineer who give you. He's not going to go line by line through the traffic report, but he will give you an overview of the parking layout and and the 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 key findings from the traffic report. Also with me tonight are Brian, Dan or Dan Phillips, and Alan Lowe. I think that may be it from the city of Norwalk, who aren't going to present, but can answer questions that may come up. The, let me just pull it up. So here's our our site here at Meadow Street Extension, the former Hatch and Bailey site, which was the lumberyard and nursery. It's 12, just over 12 acres at One Meadow Street. It's in the de-resident zone. The plan is constructed new elementary school with 127 parking spaces and athletic field and a additional playground areas. The school itself is, and this is, you'll see a little bit more in a minute, but this is essentially where the school is proposed to be located with the one main parking area and ancillary parking area here. Some play areas up this way. And we'll talk about the top of the site in just a a minute or two. But the the school, as I said, is pre-K through fifth grade. It's limited to two stories. You know, your classrooms, cafeteria, gymnasium, medium center, multipurpose rooms, some support rooms, music room, art room, administrative offices and support. Be predominantly a two-story building. Some of it will be only one story. There'll be some height variation with an average height of only 30 feet and a maximum height under 40 feet. 65 feet is what's permitted. So we're well under that. It'll be built for a maximum capacity of 682 students, although typically the the expectation would be the school will function at about 85% capacity. And about 146 of those students will be in the pre-K and K program. The current site has got a whole lot of asphalt and structures through here. It's about 60% impervious with some pipe and catch basin network for stormwater runoff. We're going to reduce the coverage to about 30% impervious. And it will, in addition to decreasing the imperfect surface, will add some water quality improvements, including vegetated swales, rain garden that will collect and treat parking lot runoff and a hydrodynamic separator upstream of the site drainage outfall. It will effectively manage quality and quantity of stormwater runoff. With respect to conservation efforts, you may not have seen yet, but a letter was submitted from Mr. Lowe today concerning solar. The city's been working diligently with SNU to come up with a a feasible approach for the installation of not just rooftop solar, but some ground mounted solar at the rear of the site, which has some ADA accessibility issues, which make it a challenge to use for sort of the the school children, but can can make for. It's fairly level, though, so it can work for for solar. It's just getting getting to this level area is the challenge. So we're looking at putting ground solar in there that that we hope and think will will be meet 100% of the electricity required for the site will be generated through that solar. And the school will be heated primarily through the use of energy efficient air source heat pumps. There'll be variable refrigerant flow units connected to heat pumps located on the roof to reduce the use of natural gas within the building. Water heaters will be electric to avoid the use of fossil fuels. Exterior walls will have an R value of 46, which sort of doubles the the code minimum of R23. Roof construction will also be in our value of 41, which exceeds the code minimum of R30. So we've made, I think, significant efforts on conservation. And we're hopeful that presenting it in this fashion also avoids some of the piecemeal approaches that we've done in the past on conservation with with respect to presenting it to you folks. I mentioned it's got 127 parking spaces proposed. Your requirements require 94, so we well exceed the parking that's required. And we're working with the the TMP Department currently to develop a parking management plan to ensure orderly and safe traffic flow during the the drop off and pickup hours. A traffic impact study was conducted by Langdon, and you'll hear from them the brief overview in just a just a minute or two. The there's extensive landscaping proposed for the site that you'll hear about in just a minute. That includes 140 new trees, 385 new shrubs, various ground cover plantings. Ms. Mitchell, who's the landscape architect, she'll overview that that landscape plan. There's also a site lighting plan that's been submitted. And there is an athletic field proposed here. At this point in time, it's anticipated that that will be used during daylight hours only, and no lighting is being proposed currently for the athletic field. That's my brief introduction. Unless you have questions at this point, I would turn it over to Edwardowski, the the architect from Tekton Architects to overview the architecture with you. Ed?
Great, thank you. I appreciate that, Adam. Any questions from anyone before I get started?
I do have a question for Adam. So at this time, why aren't there any lights at the athletic field?
I so and Alan will correct me where if I'm wrong, but I my my understanding is that the city has installed lighting when practices or games necessitate lighting, not just to light fields. And because this is an elementary school, I don't think that they currently have a need for evening practices or games. Alan, have I got that?
Yep, that's correct. We're only place that we do really, it's a it's a basically the high school. And I think the only other place we do it, it's like, you know, the the at the beach or West Rock, because they have a little bit of a sport complex. This is real accessory to a school. So we typically don't like them, and it's not regulation play up there. It's a it's just kids for kids to use in the school.
So at this school, I mean, the the hours of operation where the school will be open is what?
Well, typically hours, I would say about eight to eight to 2:30.
Oh, eight to 2:30. So there won't be any after school?
Oh, there will be. Yes, there will be. I mean, yeah, the regular schedule. But then, because this is in South Norwalk, there's, I believe, the board and don't quote me on this. The preliminary discussion is that we probably about quarter the population of students will be, we'll have a breakfast program, and about quarter of them will be after school program prior to like 5:30 or so kind of thing.
Okay, so 5:30 in the winter hours, isn't it dark?
I don't know whether they actually go out there all the way onto the top. I think they would probably be use the lower area and the gym gymnasium when the when the winter time comes, because when it gets dark, it's probably colder too in the late fall and winter. So I I I believe they were probably most of the time they'd be probably using the the what you call the gym inside the building instead.
Okay, that 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 makes sense for the students who attend the school. But what about the neighbors who want to use some of the outdoor facilities?
It it's just a open grass area. So it's really, it's not intended for like for like, no, no. Only place we lit feels is really, it's a it's like North High School, the track, so that for evening people to walk. But there's really no walking path here. It's really just kids play kick balls and stuff like that. So I I, you know, again, when when we get to winter time, I guess, you know, when the light, when when the sun goes down, basically, the the place is not open in a sense, so.
And if if I may, if if there becomes a demand for evening use of the fields, then after this, if this application is approved, and then the school is constructed and the demand is there, then then the city can always come back with the request for lighting and ask for it to be a minor change and fund that.
So I just wanted to be noted that this area in particular is a green space desert. There's not a whole lot of green spaces in the area, and it would be great if this school can provide that.
Understood.
Thank you.
Eddie?
All right. Thank you again, Eddie Wodowski. I'm an associate and senior project manager with Tekton Architects. Our offices are located in Hartford. So I'm going to take you through kind of floor plans, the two floor plans from the building, show you the exterior elevations. So trying to organize everybody is Adam mentioned. This is a two-story building for the vast majority of it. There is some play and modulation and height. But for the most part, the footprint is pretty consistent from floor to floor. The areas that you see represented on the side are NSF. That's net square footage. So that's measured to the inside face of exterior walls. The true footprint is a little bit larger. But this is how the state grants requests office calculates square footage. It's also how the building code calculates square footage. So we have that there basically for kind of clarity of, you know, just clarity. All right, so main entrance, hopefully. Can everybody see my arrow as I move around? Wonderful, thank you. All right, so main entrances, you see where the red star is, a secure vestibule with the main administrative suite immediately adjacent. You can see windows supervising, visually supervising the parking lot. North is up on this plan, so this is oriented the same way essentially as the site plan that Adam just showed you and that Kristen will be showing you as we move into that. We also have the nurse space flanking on the opposite side of the main entrance. So you have a sick child, you can get them without having to traverse through the school. We have another entrance that can be used here. You see a secondary secure vestibule off of the cafeteria, and that's intended to be used so with the school is used for after hours events, the cafeteria, the gym, the assembly spaces, so that the public can come through here. And you can see doors that prevent here and here. It's basically compartment off the building so that parents and visitors aren't wandering throughout the building. They're just where they need to be for the performance or the assembly or whatever activity is taking place. Here from the the continuation of the main hall, we have a two-story volume and a roof that pops up with some clear story windows to bring in natural light. You see a monumental stair here that's almost a kind of a tiered learning stair, if you will. So there's kind of stadiums seating along there for non-traditional learning spaces. You can see also that really the the majority, all of the public spaces are here on the first floor. So we have the media center with an associated maker space, multipurpose, which is, for all intents and purposes, a smaller gym, really intended to be used more of a gross motor space for the younger students. You see the art room here, music and band on the ends of the east side of the building. We have a full service kitchen. Over here is a sort of a service drive for receiving deliveries. You see our main utility room as we're bringing in services off of South Main Street. And then the rest of the floor is classrooms, the younger students pre-K, two pre-K classrooms, and then five K and four first grade classrooms. If you remember from the plan that Adam showed you, there is the main drop off to the south, but there's also a secondary drop off on the west. And we're what that serves us for is for students, the younger students, to be able to have staff overseeing the entrance over here, so being able to have parents, because the younger students need a little more time to get in and out of cars. So to be able to use this as a secondary entrance during drop off and pick up and have the students be able to come in immediately adjacent to their classrooms. The gym is set up with a platform for all intents and purposes. It's a stage, but once you go over a certain size, there are extra code requirements you have to put in. But that is the intent, fully accessible with ramp and stairs to get up there. And we have a large operable partition between the gym and cafeteria that will be drawn most of the time. But if there is a function that takes place on the stage that the gym is too large, or sorry, too small to accommodate, you have the ability to open up the gym into the cafeteria for additional seating area. All right, moving on to the second.
I've got a question about this, the first floor plan.
Sure.
You you've indicated the main entry and the entry into the cafeteria are secure entries, and I see a double set of doors. I don't see similar double set of doors at the other entrances by pre-K, the other side of the cafeteria or between first grade and the administration.
Yeah, the reason for that is really these are the two entrances where the public would be coming in. So there would never be an opportunity for someone to come in here unless there was staff supervising this entrance. The other doors that you see are really intended to be egress only, and we don't expect people to be coming in that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so moving to the second floor, the majority of space that you see here is really classrooms for the older students. The area in the center, you can see obviously there's some breakout spaces for, again, non-traditional learning spaces for the students and faculty support, special education, that sort of thing. But for the most part, this centerpiece is really the upper story of the two-story assembly spaces below. So you see the the classrooms ringing around the perimeter, second, third, fourth and fifth. You can see we have a couple of flex classrooms that are really intended to be able to handle bubble years. So let's say, for instance, if the fifth grade needs a fifth classroom, then the fifth grade wing comes over here. And it may be, you know, if the fourth grade needs a a fifth classroom, then this becomes fifth grade and this becomes fourth. But there's ways of kind of juggling things around to allow for inconsistencies in student population that happen from time to time. But you also see a couple of administrative spaces here. As I mentioned, that monumental open stair. So good visual supervision and administrative control as you come up to this second floor. And then, as we move to the exterior, the images, the design theme that we're really going with on this building is is trying to kind of play off the history of South Norwalk. And, you know, because there hasn't been a school here in 40 years. So we're really trying to kind of kind of bring things back sort of, if you will, the way it used to be. So the the typology that we've latched on to, and everyone seems to really enjoy it, is, you know, sort of the old Main Street look. And so we've kind of got a building that sort of mimics buildings that were popular during the industrial revolution, a very a brick building with some metal details. We're still working out exactly what those materials are going to be. But you see, basically everywhere that's red or kind of reddish brown is all brick, two different shades, a metal cap up at the top, the areas that you see in green, and then some metal in the specific accent pieces. We're looking at exposed steel at the canopies, painted exposed steel. So take you through the elevations. This is the south side. So this is the main entrance. You see that pop up of the volume for that two-story space. Lot of windows here. This is the main admin suite and the nurse. Again, we want that visual connection to the parking lot. See people approaching. This is that second vestibule over by the cafeteria. And again, you see the windows there. The opposite side, the north side, is really facing the play areas. So that tiered upper area for the field that we talked about. But there's also recreational areas to the question about, you know, where where do people go outside for for lit space? There's paved the area, there's grassy area, there's an amphitheater, there's playground equipment, age specific to all three groups of kids that are on this side of the building. And this one story, this piece here, this is the pre-K and K classrooms. And you can see there's a little bit more playfulness. We see this being some kind of push and pull of windows, kind of some benches and window seats inside the classrooms, probably a great place to introduce a little more color. On the east side, this is facing South Main Street. The reason you don't see an awful lot of menstruation here is because there is a former rail spur property on the east side. And there is a hill here that really kind of blocks the majority of this. And if you remember from the plan, that's where the cafeteria is, the kitchen, the deliveries, the utility room. So we really didn't want to spend, you know, an awful lot of money on bringing, you know, kind of life to those areas for more utilitarian back of house. The west elevation facing Oxford Street is very similar to the east. But you can see we've brought the windows all the way down to the first floor there. And that's hopefully a brief summary of the building.
Is there a canopy? Can you go back? Is there a canopy where the that separate entrance to the gymnasium? I'm thinking when you have a large number of people going in or out and inclement weather, that a canopy might might make sense there.
Yeah, there is, there is a canopy proposed here at the entrance to the gym. You can see there's actually a canopy at a few of the other locations. This is basically the other end of the main hall that would, you know, it's actually a stair here, but we imagine that that probably will be a place where students are, you know, going out, you know, to the play yards and the same thing opposite on the cafeteria. And then over here on the west elevation, this piece right here on the left side is that area that would potentially be used by the pre-K and K students for drop off and pickup. So yes, we have incorporated canopies at a number of the different entrances.
Thank you.
With that, Kristin Mitchell, the landscape architect, unless Eddie, unless you're not finished yet, I apologize.
No, I am all set. Thank you. I was going to introduce Kristen, but please.
Sorry.
Great, okay, I'll take it away. Two intros. Okay, so this is the colored site plan with the main floor plan overlaid on top. The site is accessed from Meadow Street Extension as well as Oxford Street, as as Adam had noted. The main site entry is located along Meadow Street Extension, which is noted as that larger star towards the south. Drawing your attention to what's noted as number one, that's the majority of the site parking will be located there as well as parent drop off and pickup. That will be just south of the building. That's accessed again off of Meadow Street Extension, and the main entrance is there at that semicircle looking area that Eddie just walked us through. Drawing your attention then to number two, that's the bus drop off and pickup that's located off of Oxford Street. That also includes some additional parking, which is the 18 spaces. Then in the to the north of the building, that noted as number three, those are several play areas and outdoor learning opportunities that have direct access to the classrooms and the cafeteria, as Eddie had walked us through the site plan or the the floor plan. And then number four noted on the plan, there is an ADA accessible route that's provided to access the upper fields. The upper fields are intended to be multipurpose play fields, as Alan had noted. And then finally, with number five, so that's the service and loading, which is located there to the east. Yes, thank you. So that's really minimized and and will be screened with some of the vegetation and and connects to receiving and kitchen. So with this I plan, we work to maintain some of the existing mature vegetation on site. And as Adam noted, we've increased the pervious area with native plantings, including shade trees within the parking lots to mitigate heat island effect. So now I'll turn it over to Chris McLean to go through some additional detail related to traffic and circulation.
I have a question before we get to traffic. That second playground, the one closest to the street, is there anything, any consideration or thoughts about that being very close to the street? And that's where cars fairly drive a lot, and you have car exhaust and whatnot. I've only been thinking about it recently with Jefferson that got redone, and the playground is right on Van Buren there and right on the main road, and cars are constantly going and and kidding. I mean, it's not a lot of space there. I'm just wondering if if you think that's the optimal place for that. You know, maybe moving it doesn't change the health effects at all, but I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, good question. So that's, so in that location, that is really the the bus drop off in that location. So all the parent drop up is really happening to the south. That has much more minimal traffic in that location. So that's the buses and then just two buses in the morning and evening. And then.
Hang on a second, Kristen. Sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick. I think you were asking about the one on the top right, close to South Main Street. I think you were asking about the one on the top right, close to South Main Street.
Yes, the smaller one, it looks like.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking the one closest to there, some of that.
I have a question about that one when you're done.
Right. So.
Yeah, and I think the big thing over there, and I don't mean to cut you off, is that there is, is actually, it's a little hard to see here, but there's actually a pretty substantial change in grade. So there's quite a bit of a hill separating the playground from South Main Street. So I don't think that's going to be too much of an issue.
Yeah, and Nick, there's, there's a railroad spur there. And I don't, I could be a little bit off, but it's around 60 feet wide. So from the edge of our site, you've still got another 60 feet railroad spur.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Go ahead, JJ.
Okay, so my question was regarding the other parking lot that you thought that Nick was referring to. The one that's right along Oxford and Nap Street. Actually, that is 130 Route 136. And that is a very busy, you know, roadway where trucks make the connection. And I'm just wondering, I only see where you have one cut out for traffic coming in. And I was wondering, is there going to be some sort of barrier or fencing? Or what kind of security will be there because of all the truck traffic and the, you know, the exhaust?
So what's noted, just to note, there's two points there. There's the smaller star there that's the, it's a one-way loop. That's an entrance in there and then an exit. Thanks, Eddie.
So there is, so there's an in and there's an out?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And so, and what about either fencing or tree barriers or something like that? That will reduce the amount of exhaust coming from 136.
Exactly. We have a combination. So we have a combination of shrubs in that area. We are trying, working to maintain a lot of that existing vegetation that you're seeing in the corner. We are proposing some combination of larger shade trees and then some multi-sym trees, some shrubs. And then we also have a fence around the play areas. So it's a combination of all three.
Thank you.
You got it.
One more question about the site plan. What is the jut out of green space that connects the main parking lot to Oxford Street? Not sure how else to describe it, just below the bus loop.
This one right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's because there's some strange, that's right now. So this is a property that is not owned by the city and so are these. But this is part of the parcel. So right now, what this is intended to be is a potential alternate connection. If we know that there is flooding that takes place occasionally at the southeast corner here. The floodplain does not extend to where the driveway is. But if there was an event that was more significant, this would be another way for emergency access to be able to get to the site. Hopefully it's sufficient.
And that's intended to be lawn space? Am I seeing that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's lawn space. It's basically, it's reinforced turf so that you can drive on it without destroying it, but it looks like grass space.
Gotcha.
And I think if there's other questions, we're happy to answer them. But that, that's all that we had planned as a formal presentation for this evening.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to ask your traffic guy to say something.
Oh, I forgot all about.
And Tammy has a question too.
It's always the exciting part of the presentation.
Tammy, if you had a question, if you wanted to ask it now.
Sure, thank you. It might be directed to Mr. Lowe, but it's about the the letter that was sent today with regard to the solar panels and the flat area at the top. And I just want to make sure, I've been on the property a number of times, since I've been up to Corville Nursery. And I know that there is a really steep incline there. I'm psyched to see you guys have a field, a playing field for the students and for community use. I agree with JJ that there is so little park space, open space, wherever you want to, however you want to term it in the area, that while I think solar is, you know, an admirable goal, use the roof for that and leave what's green, green. Because that, if I read that letter correctly, I don't know if 1.7 acres are going to be solar panels. But to me, in this particular location, that's not what we need there. We need open space for kids to play, for the neighborhood to use the property. Everybody knows that elementary schools get walked on by the general public when the school isn't in use. And I would strongly advocate for that to be the situation here. And then JJ, just one thing, 136 really is down on the bottom on Meadow Street and Wilson Avenue, not on Oxford and Nap.
So is that, is that Dr. Mottele Dukin Boulevard that's along this, this path along the street that goes along Nap? That's MLK Boulevard, correct? So you see how the arrow is going to Nap Street and where Nap Street connects to Oxford Street?
Right. Yeah, but 136 goes down on Meadow Street over on the right side of the property. So, but it's not.
And it makes a turn going towards, oh wait, okay, I see what you're saying. So along Oxford Street to Nap Street, okay, so MLK Boulevard is over here.
MLK is, is over here.
Way over to the right or to the west.
Yeah, if you're heading, if you're heading west on Nap Street from the school, you would hit Oxford, then Lexington, then LE, and then MLK.
Right.
Yeah.
So I apologize for my air and location. However, I stand by my statement of protecting the kids from exhaust and fumes.
Okay, well, definitely is more down by the bottom right-hand corner by South Main Street and Meadow.
That whole area is still industrial and there's still dump trucks and, you know, heavy, heavy trucks of all sorts going through that area. And if they, these kids will be affected by this if there's no barrier between them.
Yeah, more, the more greenery, the better. Sorry.
Exactly.
I would agree.
Exactly.
So just to get back to the solar thing, what, what can you tell us about that? How much land, how much ground space is it going to take up and why isn't the roof enough?
Yeah. The upper portion, if you look at this plan, that field is not really not regular, regular, multi-purpose, but it's not really a regulated field. The reason being is that if you look at the contour lines, it's pretty steep going up to that level. It levels off and pitches again upward. It's, if you see that walkway, the white walkway that kind of weave around a little bit. The reason why I turn is because it's a, you have to maintain a certain grade and add the ADA access to that playing field. So it's, it's kind of just beginning possibly get up to the top. Because you got to create a walkway up there. And also, it's, it's, it's the upper portion of site that a little further away from the building. And we feel that is, I mean, coming to the other meetings, previous projects, there's a big, strong feeling about on the commission about doing solar. So we are trying, we are working with Subno Electric Works to develop a solar project that can potentially provide 100% of electrical consumption. So I think the area up top from program, programmatic, for school programmatic perspective, we really don't use the upper portion. Because we can't, you see the contour lines really steep going up there. So, but once you go up there, it's flat. So really, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't get into play of a regular use of the, for the school. So we felt that finding the balance between, you know, the need for solar, we felt that the upper portion is not very productive in terms of access and then the school, you know, daily use. We felt it's better to put this grandma on the system, which is the least expensive way to put a solar system in.
Yeah. I think it's an important example for the kids too, if they see, you know, they.
I was thinking that exactly. Yeah.
But I've been up there and I do appreciate that it's flat up there, but is the whole school property going to be fenced in?
Majority would be. I think there would be limited opening. We are, we are continuing looking at that. Just begin, will be, yes.
What about? I firmly believe that open space in the neighborhood is more important than solar right there. And there are a lot of, it's very densely populated. And I would think that the neighbors would want to play on it. And then I don't mean to be a pessimist, but if there are solar panels there, then I'm sure it would have to be completely cut off. Or is there potential for them to be vandalized because they're on the ground?
But it's required to be fenced in around solar panel because they are electricity going for some of these equipment. So it's really, it's required to fence the, any ground on the solar system so that people, to minimize vandalism.
Yeah, Alan's not taking all the space and you still have a lot of greenery there. Like the city, it doesn't sound like it's going to be putting in pathways there. I mean, it seems great to me. And then Alan, I would only push to see, you know, if anything over the parking lots as well as part of your assessment. I'm sure you're already thinking about it, but I didn't see that in your memo. So again, I really appreciate everything you guys pushing on this.
Darius, go ahead.
That was going to be my question.
Oh, okay. Again, I, you know, I think Tammy, one of the things you're missing is the accessibility of that, regardless of whether there's solar up there or not. It's, it's certainly not ADA accessible. And I, I think that steep grade is a potential hazard for young people.
Yeah, if you can see the grade lines here, our first floor is set at elevation 27. And you can see the field is roughly about 63, 64. So you're already talking about, you know, and that's into Alan's point, this is why this path winds back and forth and why there's significant sections of ramp because the field is, is, you know, 25, 30 feet higher than the first floor of the school. And if you keep continuing on, you're up near, you're up in the eighties here. So you're about 60 feet above the level of the school that you're asking people to traverse. It's a, it's a pretty, pretty substantial path to go.
I respectfully accept that the ADA compliance is absolutely paramount. And you've achieved that getting those students to the field. What about a sledding hill? What about open space for people? Not just necessarily students, but go to other elementary schools around the city and people walk there. They enjoy the open space. And there is so little open space in the city, in this neighborhood. And it's an opportunity for people to exercise, not for people to worry about climbing up hills. I'm very familiar with the property. Like I said, I've been to Corville Nursery many times. And I realize it, there is a very steep incline there. But use that as an opportunity, not as an excuse. And I'm all for the solar, if you want to make, you know, we, we suggested on this commission to make the Norwalk High School parking lot a solar parking lot. I like that you guys want to put trees down there and maybe you can't put the solar parking lot in that area because it's a flood zone. I appreciate that. But there are other places to put solar beside a nice couple of acres of open space that could have trees and greenery. And I will stop, but I, where's Mike Mewshack? Is he not here tonight?
Oh, he's not.
Too bad.
Yeah. Well, but I think Tammy, the, look, if, if the commission says that you'd rather have it left alone than solar, you know, I mean, Alan will abide by it. But, but I think the previous message was we want, we want sort of solar at all costs. So.
Well, I think the solar is very, very important here. I doubt the commission is going to say no solar there. But I, I don't know what anybody else will do, but I would not say that.
Why don't we?
Of the building that maybe you guys can pollution credit trade with that big building in the bottom right-hand corner. Look at that, one massive black roof, no greenery around, none. You guys could ask that building if you can put your solar panels there and keep the green space up top.
Adam, I'd like to hear from your traffic and parking.
Of course.
Unless Darius, well.
Thank you, everybody. Chris McLean here from Langen Engineering. We, we conducted the traffic study for the school. And I'm just here to give you a quick overview of kind of onsite circulation and kind of the results of the traffic study. So kind of as.
I'm sorry, Chris. Let me, I'm sorry, let me interrupt for a second. This is Alan again. I have to head off another meeting. So any question you, the commission have, please refer, give it to Adam and we will respond to you accordingly. I'm sorry about this. Sorry to interrupt you, Chris.
No problem. So yeah, I'm just going to give a brief overview of onsite circulation and the results of the traffic study. And any questions, I'm happy to answer at the end. So kind of as a few of my colleagues pointed out, there's two main parking lots for the new school. There's the, the main parking lot to the south of the school, kind of circled by the magenta line and numbered one. And then a smaller visitor and pre-K kindergarten bus loop on the west side of the site with the yellow line numbered number two. In total, there's 127 parking spaces, 18 of them are kind of on the west side there by the, the yellow line. That is intended to be a bus loop. There's, there's not very many buses that are proposed to be serviced here, to be used here. A maximum of three is what the, the loop was designed for. But really, I think the school is only looking to have one or two buses. And that's to serve students that live, you know, decently far away from the school. There's a, there's a one-mile radius that the, that Norwalk is required to serve with buses. Everybody else inside of that radius, especially because Sono is fairly, South Norwalk is fairly dense. There, the majority of the students that would be going to the school live within that radius. So most, many of them would be walking or, or being driven to school. So the, the number of buses here is proposed to be pretty small. But we are proposing a loop there, potentially for, you know, school field trips, things of that nature. Going back to the main parking lot with the magenta line, number one, that's the main parking area. That's where, inside that loop there is where all the teachers are going to be parking. Like Eddie had mentioned, we're, we're overparked in, in terms of how many teachers are proposed to be employed here. And then that, and then outside of that parking lot is the, is the actual pickup and drop-off loop, which is signified by the magenta line. Cars would come in off of Meadow Street Extension and go in a counterclockwise, you know, drive around the parking lot and end up with their passenger side facing the school. And that's so that kids can get off and walk from right outside of their car door and walk directly into the school. And then vice versa during, during pickup times. That outermost loop is, you know, designed to be circuitous and end up back at the Meadow Street Extension driveway, where parents can then leave and head out on Meadow Street Extension. And then either go east or west onto Oxford or towards South Main Street. That kind of leads me to our traffic study. We had looked at five.
Before, before we go to the traffic study itself, I have noticed at a number of schools that have even more land than, than this one, that there are cars backed up on the street, especially in the afternoon during school pickups. Somewhere between half an hour and 15 minutes before school ends. There's a huge lineup of cars. And I'm wondering, Meadow Street's fairly busy. And has, because it's part of 136, has a fair amount of truck traffic. Do we, do you have adequate space for parents to stand within that loop with their cars, waiting to pick up their children? It looks to me as if only half that loop can be used because the pickup is at the top of the loop.
Yes, so we are working with TMP to develop a traffic management plan. I, I agree, you know, managing the traffic at the school is, is pretty essential to the operations of arrival and dismissal times. So we've come up with strategies to kind of get kids into and out of their cars kind of as efficiently as possible. And then to make sure that those, those cars can get moved, you know, into the site efficiently and then off the site efficiently and safely as well.
I'm not concerned about pickup and drop-off. I'm concerned about parents waiting. I'm not concerned about pickup and drop-off. I'm concerned about parents waiting uh, before school ends uh, to pick up their children.
Yeah, and, and Chairman, that, that, that's a, a concern that we're, we are, that is what we are actively working on with TMP to have a, a, a parking management plan, which will be submitted to you. Um, that will detail specifically how that will be avoided. Um, because if, if you, if we just allowed, I think, a single lane of traffic to come to that midpoint, that would be a problem. Um, but the entrance is actually two lanes wide, um, which can allow double stacking and then just coordinating where they merge in. And using the pre-K and K drop-off area and managing parking there. Um, we're, we're trying to come up with a way that makes it um, safe and keeps cars off of uh, Meadow Street.
Okay, thank you. I will, uh, I'll be looking closely at that. Um, when you come in for your public hearing.
If I may, with every school, uh, my son goes to Silvermine and with every year in every school, usually the first week of school, it's chaos. Because no parent knows how to do the delivery. After the first week passes, everything gets solved and everyone knows how to go in and out. It's only when you have a new parent that doesn't know uh, like usually the, the line to pick up that, that uh, creates a problem. But after the first week, everything goes all orderly.
Yeah, and, and I guess it remains to be seen that the assumptions are very uh, conservative, meaning they're sort of worst-case scenario about how many cars are going to be coming in and dropping off and picking up, as you heard, for the, the six hundred or so, six hundred and eighty students. Um, all but one bus load are projected to live within one mile of the school. Um, so it remains to be seen, you know, are, are the vast majority of those kids going to be walking or biking to school? Are they all going to be dropped off in a car?
So I have a question, but before I ask my question, I see that Darius has his hand up. So um, Darius, did you have a question?
Yes, it, it pertains to the abutting properties. Uh, Adam, and I know Alan just had to head out. Has the city looked into or had any discussions with the owners uh, of the abutting properties about uh, any potential acquisition?
Um, the, the, the city is um, exploring all possibilities.
Alrighty.
Okay, so I have a, I actually have a question, but I also have a statement that relates to the question that Darius has asked. So the first que, my question is, let's talk about pedestrians. We've been talking about cars, you know, parents dropping kids off, you know, and picking them up. But let's talk about those who are walking, the pedestrians. Since this area is on such a high elevation, wh- what is the pathway? What, is there like a stairs system for them to get from street level up to the school safely without having to, you know, fight or, you know, navigate a, a, you know, the, the cars that's coming in and out?
And I don't, maybe somebody other than me is probably best suited to sh- to show that entrance for the students. Um, the part that I can answer though is I, I, I expect within the next month or so, you guys to have a referral in front of you for a million-dollar allocation to TMP for um, roadway improvements uh, at the school or at the school here. Um, to help with that.
Okay, yes, because um, as I said before, I've been on record by saying, you know, I would like to see a, a safe street initiative um, for this area, for these students and not just the students, but the people who actually live in the area. Um, being able to walk to this school, being able to walk to their, to their um, homes that may be like about ten blocks away. And so I think this, this, these are for pedestrians and there needs to be um, a safe street initiative. Where they can use a stairwell or, or not have to fight against the traffic coming in and out of this school parking lot. So that's my first, that's my, that's a question, but also to piggyback off of what Darius asks about the neighborhoods, the neighbors that are budding this property, I can speak firsthand, my house is in the back of this, of this proposed school. And so we have been notified. And however, I can't speak for everybody else. Um, but we did receive notification.
And uh, I can jump in to answer your first question. Um, I'm Brian Phillips with Langen, um, the civil engineer. Um, so we've added, we've included multiple sidewalk connections to the public roadways, um, the first being from Meadow Street Extension at the main entrance. There is a, a sidewalk with no stairs. It is accessible. Um, you know, we don't have any stairs, um, you know, in terms of getting from the street to the school. Um, so that is the first. And then we also have a connection um, through the, or we are proposing a connection from South Main Street. Uh, roughly highlighted uh, where the cursor is so that students coming from the northeast and neighborhoods to the northeast can access at that level where there is a, an at-grade um, pathway to get to the school from South Main.
But what about from the Oxford Street side? Did you say there is?
There is, there is also a pedestrian access from the, the Oxford and Nap intersections.
And I, I just want to make sure I, I heard you correctly. There is an access, but there is no stairs being proposed?
Correct. We, we do not have any stairs.
Should there be stairs? Shouldn't there? Because it's such a high elevation?
Everything does not require stairs.
So the, if, if you're looking, if you're thinking about the site in terms of how it sits today, the building is going to be um, in a fill scenario. We're bringing in fill to raise the building so that it sits roughly at the same elevation of Nap and Oxford to the west. Um, it will be approximately uh, fifteen or so feet above the elevation of Meadow Street. Uh, but the length of that pathway, you know, would allow for an ADA accessible route from Meadow Street, even with the grade change. It's long enough.
So it would allow for it?
Correct, yeah.
But there, I see that you still have your hand raised and after Darius um, Chapin.
Uh, is it still up or then?
It's down, oh.
Okay.
Okay.
An, an earlier point was made about um, the cars being able to go to, to a rest uh, through the loop. Is there plans to um, draw a line or use paint to indicate drop-off, pickup zones, waiting zones versus through traffic? Similar to what you see in an airport or something?
Uh, so that's one of the things that we're looking at with uh, with developing this parking management plan um, with TMP. And um, they have um, they, they certainly have some ideas that, that were, you know, taken into account there. Um, and uh, you know, it'll be fully um, kind of vetted out and explained in this parking management plan that we're putting together. That'll probably better explain it than I, I can right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, uh, any other questions?
Hello, if I may, um, do we know if there is actually a sidewalk on Nap Street? I can't see one in my mind's eye as I've driven through there or along Oxford Street in front of the school. Is that part of the plan? Not the lower part, but.
There is an existing sidewalk on Oxford.
Okay.
It's on the right side of it, isn't it, Brian?
Correct.
And so.
Yeah.
Would people that live up sort of on the northwest side of Nap Street, that way Lexington Avenue? If their children are going to school there, can they come down and turn onto Nap Street and walk in the school by the bus loading area?
Correct. I, I do not believe that there are dedicated sidewalks on Nap Street. Um, but there is certainly pedestrian access from Nap to the site.
Okay, well, maybe that's an area where you can work with TMP to get a sidewalk there. And that would help eliminate cars that might want to go to the school because the easier we make it for people to walk to school, the fewer cars that will be going there. Not for the little ones, but you know, for the third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders. Because I believe there is a sidewalk on both sides of Lexington Street.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to commend not only the electric vehicle parking, but the um, electrical vehicle parking for a uh, accessible space as well. I hadn't seen that before, so glad that folks are thinking of including that.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, Attorney Blank, I'll turn it back to you.
I don't have, don't have anything further other than I, I know we owe you a little some information and um, hopefully we'll get put on an agenda in the near future.
Um, well, I, and we, we there are a lot of unanswered questions regarding uh, traffic and circulation. Um, uh, uh, solar, which I think uh, just needs another look. Um, and um, uh, I'm wondering, um, we shouldn't put you on uh, so soon that we don't have the answers to those questions. Uh, Steve, what did the staff have in mind?
Um, hold on one sec, I can tell you.
The earliest we were, we could consider it would be the first August meeting, which would be August second.
Yeah, that's when we had him on.
Um, is it uh, reasonable to expect we'll have the answers we're looking for? Um, I'd hate to have to continue a hearing.
Yeah, we, let, let us touch base with TMP. Um, that seems like probably the largest item that's outstanding and we, we can coordinate with them on that piece of it.
Okay. Good, then we won't uh, we won't set a date uh, today. We'll leave it to the staff uh, to set a date when, once uh, they've spoken with TMP.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next was item B twenty twenty-three uh, dash thirty-four SPR RMS three ninety-four West Avenue LLC and three, I'm sorry, three seventy uh, and three ninety-four West Avenue uh, and two Maple Street. Um, District One Block Eight Lots Ten, Thirteen and Forty-B, that's a proposed six-story uh, mixed-use development with two hundred and four dwelling units. That is the old um, YMCA site. Uh, Attorney Suchi, I believe you're representing the applicant.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Good evening. I hope everyone had a nice July Fourth holiday. And hopefully we will keep it brief. So if those of you who are planning to attend fireworks tonight, which I think they're scheduled for tonight, we'll get you out so you can hopefully get down there and see them. So thank you for placing us on tonight's agenda. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. Also on uh, present this evening is Randy Salvatore, Principal of RMS three ninety-four West Avenue LLC and Patrick Carino, who is also of three, RMS three ninety-four West Avenue, the applicant. Andy Sumalidis, Principal um, of Land Tech and the project civil engineer. Luz Del Mar Rosado and Ulysses Montes Dioka, they are the architects from Lizard Design. Tom Carmen is on the line and he is with Malillo Bauer and Carmen. Uh, they are landscape architects. And lastly, but not certainly leastly, uh, Greg Del Rio of Hardisty and Hanover, the traffic engineer for the project. Just by way of background, site plan app, this is a site plan review application. It was submitted on May thirty-first of this year. We notified neighbors on June seventh by certificate of mailing of the submission of the application. And that's, those certificates of mailing were returned to staff on or about June seventh and should be in the file. I've received one inquiry to date and it was from council to the art space across the street inquiring about what the project was all about. The applicant, as I mentioned, is three, is RMS three ninety-four West Avenue LLC. The location, as was noted, is three seventy West Avenue, three ninety-four West Avenue. And that is the old YMCA site going from the YMCA building on the south northbound to the intersection of Maple and West Avenue. And then to Maple Street, which if you were to travel north on West Avenue, make a left on Maple, there is a structure, a two-family house directly adjacent to the existing older house on the corner of Maple and West, West Ave. Excuse me, the property is in the central business district. It's approximately two-point-three-eight acres. And as I said, the existing conditions are the fifty-eight thousand square foot YMCA building and parking lot in YMCA building has been vacant for many years. About a four thousand square foot structure constructed in eighteen ninety-one at the corner. It was a dwelling then used as a way out YMCA for office and daycare and other uses. And then that two-story nineteen-twenty vintage building at two Maple Street. Uh, the project, it was, as was mentioned, is to demolish all the structures that exist on site and redevelop the site with a new six-story structure containing two hundred and four apartments. Associated site improvements, drainage, lighting, landscaping, streetscapes and the like. And uh, the, the structure would have, as I said, two hundred and four apartments. The requisite number of affordables would be inside the apartment, inside the structure. And first floor restaurant space generally, but around the, wrapping around the Maple Street onto West Avenue portion of the property. Um, it will consist of thirty-seven studios, a hundred-one bedrooms, sixty-seven two-bedrooms, two hundred-seventy parking spaces while two hundred-and-sixty-one are required. Uh, thirty, twenty thousand, just over twenty thousand square feet of recreation area is proposed, is required with more than thirty-three thousand proposed and that consists of um, a rooftop pool area, gathering spaces and other areas and balconies that all go into the thirty-three thousand square feet. Electric vehicle charging stations, as required by statute, are situated throughout the parking structure. And there are some charging stations and other similar uh, sustainability features on the rooftop. All of the agents, the CAC agencies were notified of submission of the application five weeks ago. So far, we have received sign-off from the Fire and Health Department. We've received comments from Water Pollution Control Authority, the WPCA and the staff and all of those are under review and we're working on uh, revisions and a resubmital. Uh, we are awaiting comments from TMP and also from um, from TMP. We also received comments from the First District Border Department and those we're responding to as well. Uh, this project is required to undergo a peer review for design purposes and consistency with the design standards. Uh, that design review has been undertaken by BFJ. And last week, we had a very productive meeting, conference call with Frank Fish of BFJ. With, and generally speaking, there were no substantive design issues that emerged from his review of the project and its consistency and compliance with the design review standards. Um, I would like the commission to consider the following as we make presentation tonight. As I said before, this is a site plan review application. The standards of review are rather limited. And we would ask that perhaps you would consider not holding a public hearing on this application since we will submit to you that the application meets all the requirements of site plan review. And uh, perhaps a public hearing isn't warranted on this application. At this point, I would just like Mr. Sumalidis to walk you briefly through the site plan. Followed by um, Luz. Yeah, Luz Rosado. And then hopefully we'll have some time for, for um, Mr. Del Rio on traffic. But if you have any questions of me at any point, please feel free to ask them. I'm happy to answer them. But at this point, um, Andy, if you wouldn't mind screen sharing site plan and we'll walk them through.
Sure. Andy Sumalidis, uh, Principal and Professional Engineer with Land Tech out of Westport. Just gonna walk you through the site a little bit. Here you see the an aerial of the surrounding neighborhood. In yellow here, you see the project site. Um, Route Seven Connector to the west, north is pointing in this direction. Um, to the north's Maple Street, so the east is West Ave. Um, here you see Lockwood Matthews Mansion, the pinnacle that's under construction, Waypoint, the Berkeley, um, all familiar developments. This is the last corner of the four corners um, of that redevelopment site. Here, I'll just point out a few, uh, this is the existing conditions map in blue here is the subject property. As Attorney Suchi mentioned earlier, it's comprised of three parcels. Two Maple Street, which is this little parcel here. Three ninety-four West Ave, which is the corner parcel. And the larger three seventy, the old YMCA. Um, parcel, as you could see, a lot of the parking was shared, accessways to all these sites. Um, upon approval of this or pending approval, these three lots would be merged. Um, in green here, I just wanted to point out a couple of the Connecticut State Properties are here in green. And the city owns the parking lot to the south here. It's um, three fifty and three sixty West Ave. And yellow here, I just highlighted the North River Valley Trail that runs to the west of this property. And here's Route Seven and beyond the west side here is the Norwalk Hospital. Um, here's a quick view of the site plan. Um, here you see access to the site is off Maple Street, which is teed up with Berkeley Street here directly opposite it. Um, here is a parking garage, a two-level parking garage. Um, that you'll hear more from the architects of the existing bus stop is here to the east, which would remain obviously as part of this proposal. Um, the necessary street trees, lighting along Maple and West Ave that meets the design regulations. On the corner here, you'll hear more about it is the anchor of a retail restaurant. Um, you have amenity and lobby space, townhouses along Maple Street, West Ave. And then the residences above that with amenity deck. In terms of stormwater improvements. Um, you could see here in this darker gray area is the second level roof, which is amenity deck. Um, the idea here is you have these drains in the roof system that meter out the water. The, the patio or amenity space is also elevated, which provides storage below it. Um, and then this all gets tied into a hydrodynamic separator, which filters the water. And then ties into the town's drainage system. The existing infrastructure currently just runs off untreated from all parking and roof areas. But we see this as a vast improvement. It reduces the, um, the rate of run-up up to the hundred-year storm. As well as provide the necessary water quality volume. Um, and quickly here, the utilities, we see the utilities being serviced on northwest portion of the property. A couple of transformers, all your meters, everything will be housed in this vicinity. Um, as Attorney Suchi mentioned earlier, we're working with the Water Department. We, we, um, sent them the information on um, on a will serve letter so they can provide domestic and fire service. For sewer, um, we did speak with D P W and they didn't seem to have any comments on the sewer. We have two connections to the sewer. They're both on West Ave. One is here. And one is here. Um, there's ample sewer capacity in both the, um, conveyance pipes and at the plant. Um, so there's no issues there. And that in a nutshell, um, is our site plan utilities. I'll answer any questions before I pass the baton.
Are those, uh, townhomes also on West Ave on the front left?
Correct.
Oh, cool.
And you'll hear more about that when you see these, um, architectural renderings and site and their plans.
So I have two questions.
Sure.
Okay, so you just mentioned the architect rendering. I was asked, I was wondering about that, but you're going to present that at another meeting?
I don't know, Luz, do you have that today? Do you have a rendering?
Um, we have, uh, two dimensional elevations of the townhomes, yes.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions of, um, Mr. Sumalidis at this point or any further questions for me?
Um, I have another question. So will there be any retail at street level?
There is no retail proposed. The, the, um, activated space is restaurant at that corner where Andy's circling, circling. That's right at Maple and West. And the other activated space is the lobby leasing amenities that would, uh, front on West Avenue. But there is no retail proposed at this site.
Is there solar on the roof?
Uh, we can get to that when, um, Ms. Rosado presents hers. Her plan will have better information on that. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Schulman, just holding off.
Not at all, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Um, Ms. Suchi, who owns the property?
It's under contract for, with RMS three ninety-four West. It has been owned by Norwalk Hospital. And, um, uh, that contract has, I believe, been signed. I don't believe closing is taking place as yet.
Is, if, uh, this doesn't go through as you wish, does the property revert back to the hospital? Or, I mean, it's never left the hospital's possession.
I'm not, I'm not aware of what the contractual provisions are, so I'm, I mean, I, I don't think that's a zoning issue, but I, I can't answer that. Cause I'm, I did not negotiate the contract.
Thank you.
Sorry about the noise in the background.
I'll, I'll pass it off to Luz. Luz, you want to share the architectures?
Yes, for, for the record, my name is Luz Rosado.
Lucy, if I may just, I apologize for the interruption before. Sorry, everyone.
Okay. Um, I'm sharing my screen, so hopefully you guys can see this. Uh, it's an aerial of the site. Um. Since civil engineer went through the, um, location of the site and the, uh, characteristics of the site, I will just focus on the building itself. Um, six-story residential building with, um, a restaurant use at the ground floor. And amenities on the ground floor. Um, massing wise, we've designed the building to have a U-shaped. Um, design with a open courtyard for the use of the residence. Um, the long part of the building, um, facing West Avenue to create a street aid edge. Um, and also, uh, on Route Seven, um, is still the portion of the residential building. Um, the main entry to the building is of West Avenue, um, for pedestrian use. And at the corner of Maple and West Avenue is where we have our access to the restaurant use. Um, as it was described, the vehicular access is then, um, from Maple Street. Um, from Maple Street around this location further back. Um, if, uh, I'll just put the floor plans next to each other. There's, there's grade on, on this site. So, um, the, the floor plan on the left side, it's, uh, you know, the closest to grade to West. Avenue where we have our residential entry highlighted in yellow. Um, we want to make sure that the parking area of the building that's inside the podium is towards the back. Um, of the, um, of the property and on the side and align with, um, either, um, active use. Uh, for amenities and entry lobby and leasing of the building in orange. Uh, the pink is the restaurant as, as mentioned. Um, at this corner here, um, we left a generous area for, uh, the pedestrian use. And, uh, along Maple in the lighter colored yellow on Maple Street and on West Avenue. Where you see this, um, this blockout areas are the, uh, uh, townhouse style units. Um, which are accessed from both from the interior of the building, but also from the exterior, uh, street. Um, and that's to provide another level of active frontage, um, on the pedestrian, uh, environment. Um, then in gray is the, uh, parking garage. Um, once you, when you enter the parking garage. Um, you, you have a great difference. So you're actually ramping up as you're midway. So you ramp up. Um, to get to the upper level of the garage and, um, you will circulate around the garage area where there's an internal ramp that brings you back down. Into the first level on the ground level, which aligns with the residential areas at the ground floor. Um, in, in, in addition to that frontage that I've described, we also have a um, past the garage entry, we have a bike storage area and a pet area. Closer to the trail, um, system here for convenience. Uh, parking storage, uh, for use of the residence. Um. Internally, um, you, you come, once you enter the residential building. Um, you have a set of elevators that will bring you up into another amenity areas that we have in the courtyard area. I'll show you in a second. Um, before I move on, um, also I'll point out that loading and trash. Um, facility are accessed through the Maple Street and this area.
Can I ask a question before we move on from this slide?
Sure.
Um, are all the units rental units? So the townhomes are also rental? Condos in any way, correct?
Correct.
And then the question on the street activation concept. I love that you put them on West Ave down where they are. Is there a reason? The, um, amenity space is on the first floor there? Like, have you found that that activates the street versus if you continue down with first floor rentals, whether it's other townhomes or other similar things? I just worry that it creates a bit of a dead zone there, but curious to what your experience has been here.
Uh, the, the question is whether it's too much amenity space or not enough.
Not too much, and just where it is, like on the first floor, you know, you have those five, what, six townhomes down there, right, on West Ave. Starts to activate the street and then you sort of go into the amenity street. It's sort of like isolated versus if you continued all the way up with townhome concept things. I'm just curious, in your experience, do you find that, you know, in my experience, you know, the amenity space is just a glass wall of gym equipment that people get to look at. Uh, versus doing much to bring people to the, to the area. Um, curious your thoughts on that.
Well, it's, it's different styles of activation. One is when you use it, you know, it's a physical activation as you coming into these units. Um, that's, that's a level of activation, but it's only for the one person that, right, that, that lives in that, in that unit. And the other level is what you, the activity that you see through the glass. So, um, you know, in my experience, having that variety, um, it, it just brings more current quality to the building. Um, and it's not only, you know, we, we, we're not only looking for, um, fitness equipment. There will be other types of amenities, such a co-work space and, uh, and, you know, they will have a variety of interior spaces. And then further down, you, you also have the restaurant use. So it just create different qualities and types.
Thank you.
Um, can you tell me, um, will, uh, any of the, uh, townhouse units, uh, be, uh, among the affordable units?
Um, at this, at this time, we, we have, uh, highlighted the working housing units in the upper levels of the buildings.
Uh, I think you need to spread them throughout the building.
However, Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, excuse me for, for cutting you off.
That's all right.
Certainly, the workforce housing regulation requires that the workforce housing units be dispersed throughout the building with all different typologies. And if that's something that we need to adjust, um, we'll speak to our client and adjust it accordingly. Um, but yes, you are correct. We have to provide those units throughout the building and, and have, have them, and if we have to adjust, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Question. So, um, in your other map, this property, is, is it a budding the Norwalk Valley Trail? Is it, it's a trail and back of this property?
Yes, the Norwalk River Valley Trail, uh, extends to the west of this property. There are two small triangular parcels still owned by the state of Connecticut that we don't own. And to the south, there are two parcels owned by the city of Norwalk that we do not own, but the Norwalk River Valley Trail runs north-south, uh, to the west of this property.
Right, so how, how, how will, will this impede or, um, um, block the, the, the trail anyway? I mean, this is going to be the same pathway. Will there be any obstructions by this building or by the, um, you know, I, I guess, I guess, you know, the height of it, is that, is that going to take away from the, the peaceful walk or the peaceful use of people using that trail?
I don't believe there are any obstructions proposed that would block the trail or make it impassable. Uh, and it would remain in the condition that it is today. The development would be to the east of that. Um, and perhaps considering the condition that the property is, has been in over the, over time. This would be a benefit since there's new structure, there's new lighting, there's new landscape. And improvements to, to parcels that have been somewhat neglected over the years. But there's a proposal or no component part of this proposal to in any way impede that free access on that established Norwalk River Valley Trail.
Thank you for that. And you're right, it would be a great improvement. Is that going to be a tree line, right, and, right? Like that, that separates the trail from your property line?
Um, I'd have to defer to Mr. Carmen in just a minute.
Pull that up also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have Tom's playing here. Unless, Tom, you want to pull it up?
I, I can, I can certainly pull it up, yeah.
Sure.
All right, while you're doing that, Steve, you had a question?
It's just a comment. Staff had, uh, spoken to, um, the applicant about potentially activating that northern triangular piece. I know that's state property, so we need to get um, an easement or some kind of access agreement on that, but it would be a nice amenity piece off of the trail. If, you know, I, I suppose of just having the trail itself, having a place to either stop and sit, or there could be sculpture or something along there, give it a little activity.
On that same note, I do see a very tiny sliver of the, like, uh, southwest corner of the building. Uh, does overlap with the trail there. Uh, is there any easement to, uh, allow that trail to continue to exist? I know it's like this, the tiniest proportion of the property, but.
That was also something that was noted when we had discussions with BFJ and the plan will have to be adjusted to pull that back so it doesn't impede into the trail.
Yeah, so the actual building doesn't. It's just a, a piece of our property. So you could see that green space, it's right there.
Trail is out actually on our property, so we can work something out, I'm sure.
Right.
I love, I love the idea of a sitting space with a sculpture.
Good evening, everybody. This, this is, this is drawing L one, the landscape plan. My name's Tom Carmen, um, landscape architect with Malillo Bauer Carmen. Um, we do have, we're retaining some of the existing trees along the trail that's shown here in the gray color. And then you do see our property line that we are, uh, defining a sitting area right adjacent to the building that goes up to the property line. There is an existing fence, um, that is not on our property. That, um, we are not intending to, uh, adjust in any way. Uh, but that does run, um, along the, uh, the trail as well in this location.
So, so will this seating area be for the public?
This is, um, right off of the sidewalk. It's one of the, uh, the public realm spaces that somebody would be able to walk into and sit there. There are a few benches. We have a couple of bike racks. Uh, similar to the way we're treating the larger public realm space at the intersection of Maple and West Ave. That larger public realm space really kind of creates a great gateway, um, in this intersection right here. Again, some seating elements, uh, planters, bike racks, trash receptacles, all those kind of elements that really do improve a, uh, a streetscape and, and public space.
On that note of improving, uh,
Yeah.
Sorry, David. Uh, in that public realm space on the west side that abuts the trail, uh, I see you've, uh, listed a number of amenities there, which is great. Um, consider maybe adding a, like, bike repair station or something to, um, help, you know, neighbors who are going up and down the trail as well.
Okay, that's something we will consider, certainly.
If I may, um, not sure who to, to direct the question to, but along West Avenue, that's a rather, um, you know, a major thoroughfare. People are turning the corner at, at bottom south end of your property to go or continue on Route One going under Route Seven. Have you ever considered, I like pulling the townhouses back and adding a little bit more green space along the whole side of that building? Um, and we, with all due respect, a little pink corner up on Maple Street. While, you know, maybe you consider it a lot of, um, amenity space. This is a massive building, it's six stories and it's going to kind of loom there. I'm not sure how many stories the building across the street is going to be in the old Lowman's Plaza. Maybe you could tell us that. And also, could you please? I think the waypoint is only four stories. Am I, and the one, the Berkeley across the street, are they four stories, not six?
Steve?
Oh, okay, no, I thought that was directed at.
I don't know who to address that.
The Berkeley is definitely lower. The, um, I'll let, I can let the applicant speak to it, but the the northern part of the building that fronts on Maple is lower, um, in scale than the West Ave is the full six stories, except for where they pulled it back, uh, ten feet off as required. Along there, when it gets to at least the fourth floor, but the Maple side is lower in terms of its height.
Okay.
I, I'm just looking at, on Google Street View. Um, they both look like six-story buildings.
Okay, I was getting there. And so
Yeah.
All the people that live in this building will come in on Maple Street. And then the building looks like a U in some drawings, but it looks like it's completely full in other sketches. So I'm just having a little bit of a hard time understanding. So really, the
I think if we go through our full presentation, I think we'll answer a lot of these questions.
Okay, great.
Yeah, like you'll see it here. Yeah.
And that's the rooftop, though. That's an amenity deck for the people that live there and it's on the roof, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Why don't, why don't we go back to the discussion of the architecture? I think that
Right.
Ms. Rosado said, uh, that, um, she did have some elevation, two D, uh, elevations.
Okay, so I, I am sharing my screen again and, uh, what, what Okay, so I, I am sharing my screen again and, uh, what, what you've seen so far is the lower. Portion of the building where you have pool, pool. Side, uh, parking garage. Um, once you go up above the podium level, um, you, you see where, what you see in yellow is that U shape? That continues going up. Um, on the here, the nor. The north side of the page is Maple, uh, Street. Um, this portion is about two stories. Um, tall, so that, that height and massing in the pedestrian level, it's, it's different than on the West Avenue. Um, it's a lower scale. Um, and it also have some active use at, you know, that second floor level with the courtyard. So it's just a different scale, a different quality of building, uh, and less massing on Maple. Um, going back to the organization of the building, um. If, if you remember, I mentioned the elevators. Once you come in on the, the main entry of the building, you have the set of. Elevators that brings you up to this. Uh, to this first residential, full residential level. Uh, you have a smaller, uh, amenity area that connects the interior and the exterior. And, uh, a generous outdoor space. Amenity outdoor space with, uh. You know, pool area and outdoor activities that a landscape architect will describe, uh, in more detail. Um, but we have lined the space with units that are gonna have some patios to enjoy this. Outdoor area, but again, we wanted to kind of not enclose the courtyard, keep it. Open, uh, to, you know, provide more light, provide more air, so have, uh. essentially massing. Um, as you go up. Um, it's pretty simple, same shape of the building coming up. Uh, but what is distinctive about this building is that we're providing, uh, some units that have a loft condition on the upper level. Um, and you can see that by this, uh, on, on the R4 loft plan. Um, there's a, there's a areas that are two-story with this loft condition, they, they look down into the units. I'm saying another quality style, uh, of residential, um, area. Um, another, um, amenity that we are providing. A roof terrace. Um, at the corner. Um, if, if you saw in the ground floor landscape, we're providing that public realm, um, that. That, uh, uncovers this corner as gateway site. Um, in addition to that, we're providing the roof terrace at that corner, just to provide another level of activity, uh, and quality to the building. Um, the, this section through the long way of building, you can see the, the height. That it's on Maple Street, you see it's like, you know, it's, we have volume and also that, that two-story townhome unit. Um, so the scale is much, uh, smaller. Um, this section is cross-sectional on West Avenue. Um, even though it's a six stories, we are providing a series of step backs. Um, so that to, you know, uh, help with the scale of building and the massing of building. Um, provide articulation and, and it will bring another level of variety. Into the architecture character that you're gonna see on the elevation.
Uh, how far, how far back? Uh, on West Avenue, uh, where you have only two stories. Um, how far back is that cut in?
You mean how far back, we're stepping back?
How, yeah, how, how many feet?
Um, and the first step back is about six feet. And on the second step back is an additional four to five feet. It, it varies in depth depending on the articulation. Once you see the facade, you're gonna see that we have a variety in, in that. In that regards.
Thank you.
But overall. The big, the, the distance from the, the front facade to the, to the upper level, we have a minimum of ten feet. In some instances, we have more.
And Lucy, if you would correct me if I'm wrong, isn't this setback on West Avenue a maximum of ten feet? We, we have to build up to that line, it's. There's a little differentiation in the zoning regulations compared to other zones. Could you just explain that to the commission?
Yeah, the setback versus step back. Um, the setback from the, on the street level, it's a ten feet at the front, it's a ten feet. Max. Um, from, uh, the property line or improvements. You can get closer, but ten feet is the maximum.
I, I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner Langgallis, as to why this structure is as it is on West Avenue. It's a ten-foot maximum setback on that, that street facade.
So from the edge of the sidewalk that abuts the street, ten feet deep is where the building has to start. So you could have five feet of sidewalk and five feet of green space. Or, and, and, okay, thank you.
And one other question I wanted to answer, um, I just spoke to my client and. Uh, this, the contract with the hospital is contingent upon zoning approval. It has not been contract, uh, uh, closing has not taken place. Wanted to make sure I confirm that. I'm sorry, Lucy interrupted, excuse me.
No, what I'll do, so I'll move to the elevations, I think, uh. We'll share that, um. Just format of the page, the top elevation that you see in two dimension, it's the elevation on West Avenue. And the bottom elevation is the elevation of, on Maple Street. Um, starting on the right side at the corner where we had the public realm and restaurant use. Um, is where, um, i- i- if you see the elevation, we, we divided, I wanna say into three sections. Um, one is, one is what's happening at the pedestrian level. Uh, what's happening at the corner as a gateway. And, uh, what are we doing with the remainder body of the building, how we're articulating that? Um, at the corner, we wanna highlight it, as, that's, you know, uh, keep that language of the gateway, ma- make it unique. In comparison of what the other buildings near, nearby, um, have as a architectural character. Um, so we're using, um, a different material, a wood color, just to highlight the corner, make it unique. Uh, make it different, um, by contrast from the next door neighbors and the remainder of the building.
Are, are these, are these the, uh, actual proposed colors?
These, these are the colors we are proposing. And there's still a two-dimensional representation, but it's as close as possible that. That, that, the materials that we wanna represent. Um, in, in the corner, we are proposing a, a wood. Metal panel. Um, it's just make it a warm color. Um, then, as I mentioned, at the pedestrian level, the first. Taller story or two stories, um, we want to use a red brick in two tones. Um, just to tie in with some of the, um, other buildings in the context that are used, the red brick is a recognizable material and color. Um, traditionally used in residential buildings. Um. When you see, i- if I zoom in into the facade, um, in the portion where we have the amenities and the lobby area. Um, we, there's a transparency requirement and also you want to provide that activity and see through. As where we showing, uh, a larger areas of glass, volume. Um, and then as you keep going on, on, um, where we have the existing bus area, we're providing a break and a notch in that. Uh, in that area, um, to provide space for people to circulate around the bus. And then we transition into the two, uh, into the townhouse style units. With the, uh, with stoops to get into the, into those units. Um, they're raised from grade, uh, about, eh, about a foot and a half. Uh, that grade varies, uh, in, on West Avenue, but. The idea is that residential portion is a little bit higher. Um, and it just have a different quality and scale for, of more residential look. Uh, then above this, where we started stepping back our building, um, we, we created a, a. A language that is broken down into, into, uh, these sections. Uh, so it appears like you have multiple buildings, uh, that are integrated with, um, you know, brick sections. Um, these are what you see on the, on the upper area is the articulation of the facade. So you can see there's deeper, deeper areas and, uh, it's a smaller, eh, eh. Articulations where we change the materials. We still use some brick in the upper level, but we want to leave that happening at the lower level, just to differentiate what's happening above from below. Um, then, uh, on the top floor, uh, we're also stepping back further the building. Um, to provide, uh, that, uh. Continuous, eh, area on the top, we're providing, uh, articulation on the roof edge. Um, again, just the sort of things, uh, to make sure we're breaking this, the, the scale. Um, you know, up here, smaller buildings, a lot of depth into the building, but still using the same language because we wanna make sure it's cohesive. Design. Uh, and then in this case, we're proposing, uh, a combination of fiberglass cement siding and, um, panel. Um, in the gray tones and dark tones, just to contrast each other. Um. That's on West Avenue. On. Maple Street, um, what you see here on the left is that corner that turns. Uh, if you see on the top areas where we're providing the roof terrace, uh, for activity, we wanna make it unique, so we brought it down to provide more height. At the corner. Um, and on the lower area, this is where the restaurant use is. Um, then we transition again into using the same language for the, uh, for the, uh, townhouse style units. Um, that has the smaller scale elements, more residential look. Uh, but you can see that the rest of the building is faded back. Um, so the exposed facade in Maple, it's really a much lower scale. Um, there's, there's great differentiation, so it goes approximately nine feet going up. So by the time you end up closer to the trail, is more of a one, a taller one-story, um. Scale, uh, where we have the bike area here. Um, and we're bringing back more of the transparency. Um, in, and then in this zone is where you had the garage entry and the loading entry, there's a side that we have provide services to the building. And the, we still wanna articulate it similar, uh, to the rest of the building, but, um, this is where our services are coming from. Um, beyond, you can see, uh, the, on the pitched roof is where we're providing those two-story, uh, loft. Units that I mentioned on the upper level, and that gives another, you know, level of articulation into the building. Um. Uh, when I turn on the, on the, i- if you notice this side, it's, it's right here. Um, we, we are mimicking the idea of the wood corner. Um, gateway design, but as look from, uh, the highway or Route 7. Um, and we're using the same language on that corner. Uh, on the upper elevation here, it's, uh, facing the Route 7 highway.
That's the part that abuts to the, the trail?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
This abuts the trail, um, on this end of the upper leg of building is where we have. Uh, we're bringing back that wood material that I mentioned. Um, rear, uh, here at the corners where we have our bike area. And, uh, in the landscape plan, you saw where the benches and pedestrian active area, it's right here. Um, and, uh, but in addition to that, we also have our services, our, our utility, uh, rooms in this area. And, uh, you know, on the, on the, you can see the, the garage levels, um. Here at the lower area. And then we are following the same articulation, we're at the corner, we have some brick. Um, that skip comes up higher, uh, but then at the top, we're breaking it with, uh, the, uh. Ban and changing color and, and material. And then the bottom part, it's the elevation facing a, the parking lot or the south of the building. Um, right here at the, at the, uh, right side of the elevation is. West Avenue. Um, and you can see residential building above. At the corners, we're bookmarked, yes, like a book, bookend, uh, design and keep, keeping it symmetrical, just to provide a, a, a nice. Frontage into this elevation. Um, brick on the base and a combination of fiberglass cement, uh, materials on the upper levels with a loft. Um, roofline change on the upper levels. And this is the, um. The, um, end of the, the presentation.
Uh, I asked, I asked a question about, um. Solar, and I thought it was going to be answered as part of this presentation.
Yes, um, what I'll do is I will let the landscape architect, um, well, before I, I let the landscape architect describe that. Um, because we are. Okay, because we are providing, um, pitch roof design into, into the building. Um, and we have to provide mechanical. Eh, equipment that it's set back from, from the, uh, facade. Um. We, we didn't look at, put in solar at the roof, but we have an alternative that, uh, the landscape architect will explain.
And while Mr. Carmen's coming on, I just wanted to add two things. Uh, before this application was submitted, we did have preliminary discussions with Mr. Kleppen and his staff, as well as Mr. Bedoli. And some of the design changes were, um, emerged from those discussions, such as the townhouse design on West Avenue. And some other features, some other articulation, step backs and things of that nature. Uh, they were very helpful in providing their comments and thoughts on, uh, design changes. Tom?
Yes, let me, uh, I will share my screen again.
Uh, let, let, before you do, that's fine, uh, attorney Sachi. Um, uh, given the scale of this building, I'm going to recommend, uh, to the members of the commission. That this go to public hearing. Um, I, uh. I, I, I don't think we'd be fair to the public if, if, uh, we did otherwise. I don't think a site plan review, uh, by itself would be enough. Um. Given that. And, and, um, uh, you know, your, your architect, uh, gave a presentation and I let it go. A- at length. And I understand why, because you're still hoping that, that, uh, a, a site plan review will be sufficient. Um, but I don't think it will be. And, and that being the case. Um, can the rest of the presentation be a little briefer?
Sure.
Thank you.
I do want to, the commission to keep in mind, though, that unlike special permit. Uh, the commission does not have the, the wide discretion when it reviews a site plan application. There are very limited. Uh, standards of review, just keep that in mind when we're moving forward. And if it's your pleasure and it is within your discretion to hold a hearing. Just keep that in mind that the, the standards are very narrow when, uh, when you are acting upon a special, a site plan review application.
Not only will, 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 will I keep it in mind, but, uh, I would, uh, suggest you remind us again. When we do go, when we do go to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if there is a, and I know that's probably an inopportune time right now, but is there a date in mind to hold a public hearing? Could it be?
Let's, let's talk, look, I think we can talk about that, uh, at the end of the presentation.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me, uh, I'm, I'm jumping back to L1. This is a street level landscape plan. We spoke about the, the. Three public realm spaces at the intersection over adjacent to the trail and over by the bike. I mean, by the bus stop itself, but we also have street trees along the frontage of, uh, both streets. And the, uh, the, the sidewalk treatment is in keeping with the, uh, the city standards in terms of scoring. Uh, the tree surround detail, the paver banding and such. And in keeping with the minimum, uh, sidewalk, uh, dimensions. And then what we're doing is we're accenting the stoops that Luz had presented, um, with some planting as well. The, um. Planting around the, 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 the south and the west side of the building, there's a, a planter there that we, um. That really accents the building and we have some trees along there also as, uh, people are walking. people are walking and biking the trail, very aesthetically pleasing. So jumping um, to lighting, the uh, lighting along Maple Street is the waypoint uh, fixture. The, the standard fixture within the area there. And then along West Ave itself, uh, the existing taller um, decorative fixtures with the arm are proposed as well, um, or exist. We've uh, layered in the architectural lighting that you see at the stoops as well as any of the, at the egress doors are shown in this uh, L one point one drawing. And what I'll do next is jump up to the uh, the amenity space. So you just heard um, some information from the architect, how the building does step back in that U kind of configuration. And uh, proposing a variety of uh, amenities for the residents such as some lounge seating, uh, barbecue grilling opportunities. And then certainly, as you see here, a pool with uh, raised pool terrace and shade structure. All the green that's proposed here is uh, what we consider intensive planting. So we have about a foot of soil volume for most of the plant material and then some additional um, planters proposed to um, we've got about eighteen or nineteen trees proposed on this deck. So providing the adequate soil depth for those um, trees as well. Lighting plan is uh, depicts various types of fixtures, bollard lights as well as um, some column lights that we've pulled back into the, the U of the building so that it's not um, obtrusive from uh, along Maple itself. Um, but low level lighting just to provide uh, safe um, circulation. And then up on the upper roof area, as uh, indicated, we have an amenity space up there with uh, barbecue grill, a shade trellis, um, some lounge seating, again utilizing uh, planter curbs as well as some planters for the trees. And then on both of these levels, we've located a number of uh, solar charging stations um, for while the residents are up there, have plenty of opportunity to charge various uh, devices that they may have. So located them in uh, in multiple locations at both of those levels. Again, we have uh, some lighting associated with this uh, upper level. Again, kind of low level lighting, which is bollard lights and then some wall mounted lights as well. That gives overview of uh, the landscape improvements and lighting improvements.
Are all the light fixtures dark sky compliant?
Uh, the, they are, yes.
Mister Carmen, I have a quick question. Um, you had mentioned earlier um, on the amenities that were next to the um, trail. I, I thought I heard you say that there was a fence there that was on somebody else's property that you weren't doing anything about. Does that fence um, block either visual or physical access or both from the trail to the amenities?
So the uh, the fence that I was referring to is located, it's, it's this line right here. That's an existing fence that's not on our property. You can see the dark uh, black line, which is our property. It, it does partially uh, as you can see, screen part of it, but once somebody gets past that fence, um, it opens up and somebody would be able to take the sidewalk, gain access onto our property and into that space.
Thank you. Uh, do, do you know who owns that fence?
I, I am not sure the uh, whose property this is. Maybe somebody else from our team can answer that.
Yeah, it's the state's property.
So it's the state's fence then too?
Correct.
Yeah, we, we've, we've talked to the applicant about potentially doing something with that.
I, I was just curious because I didn't quite understand the answer and now I see why, because it doesn't block everything.
Yeah, I think it would be good if that fence was gone, though. That would be a good thing.
Agreed.
Were you gonna get to the solar panels?
Uh, I, I mentioned the, what we're doing for solar is we're providing some solar charging stations up on the the upper levels in various locations at the amenity deck as well as the rooftop. They're not um, full solar panels to energize the building. They are for uh, the residents to charge their um, various devices.
I don't think that's going to be.
We're talking about.
Not at all.
At all, no.
Is Steve, for a site plan review, is that within our purview?
Uh, that's what I was just thinking about when you asked that question. Um, let me, I don't want to give a firm answer right now, but I will get you one.
Okay, so the staff will, will, will get back to us and we'll get back to you. But in terms of what we expect uh, uh, from developers, uh, this is clearly not acceptable. Uh, in terms of uh, meeting what we consider to be um, uh, reasonable uh, amount of uh, uh, of solar electricity.
And just keep in mind, those are not regulations that have been adopted yet.
We understand.
But we could talk to Steve further about uh, solar panels as you've requested for special permits and the interrelationship between those and site plan applications. Happy to talk to you about it.
Are you doing any uh, electric car stations in the garage?
Yeah, there are many. If you look at the plan that's on the screen right now, you'll see underneath where it says total one thirty six P S. There's an entire row uh, that's right there, uh, above. There are some there and there's other electric vehicle charging stations on the second floor of the parking structure.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn it back to you.
Well, thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the commission for your time tonight. Um, as Mister Chairman has indicated, uh, there seems to be desire on the part of leadership to hold a public hearing. So if that's the case, if you would be kind enough to let us know what the schedule might be, we, we're anxious to move forward as we po, as fast as we possibly can. And we can certainly be in a position to send out the requisite notices to neighbors if you're inclined to hold a hearing two weeks from tonight. Um, if not, um, we're, we're in a bit of a disadvantage if we go beyond August second due to vacations and and individuals on availability mid-August. But if there's any possibility, we could move this forward for the nineteenth of July, that would be beneficial.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the only tricky thing is I don't know if the peer review is going to be done quite in time for that. That's like the, probably the sticky point. I think the second's definitely doable. I, I would see it wrapping up that night, but that's just my guess.
Okay, we, we, we nonetheless need to take uh, some action. Uh, we, we have the peer reviewer already working on this, but we need to approve uh, the, the peer uh, reviewer. Uh, and uh, I'd uh, also like um, uh, us to um, uh, excuse me. Um, I don't, also um, let me, uh, sorry, I've lost my place on my notes. Um, oh, I'd also uh, like uh, uh, a motion, we can do it in a single motion. Uh, to, to hold a public hearing on this. Again, it's, it's over two hundred uh, housing units. It's six stories uh, tall, certainly for um, uh, any other development that was, that was a special permit. We would uh, hold a hearing. Uh, the fact that this doesn't require a special permit, um, uh, I don't think ought to uh, exempt this uh, project. And I don't frankly like the precedent uh, it would set. Darius, you have your hand up.
Yes, uh, Mister Chair, I would just like to move that we approve a peer review.
Would you uh, also include uh, the public hearing?
And, and uh, establish or set a public hearing for this uh, project, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to that uh, motion? Okay, Hector Pachas has uh, seconded uh, the motion uh, discussion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really grateful. There is a peer review um, for, for this complex, you know, it's really an interesting spot and but it's a really focal point in the city. So I think it'll be really good to get that perspective uh, on that of like what could be there and how can that be really be an inspirational piece? Um, and then also the historical element. I know it's sort of, that's, I think that points moot, but I don't know if we can hit that at some point with the YMCA building, sort of. I know, I'm glad something better going there because it's been, you know, dead space for, forever. Uh, but curious the, the thoughts on that. I don't know if we've moved past that, but I would like to hit that at a later point in time.
Actually, Mister, we have passed that. The um, an application for demolition was submitted. There was no, was, was no objection. The area to object passed, so that um, application for demolition was.
That's done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, other um, conversation?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Lou. Um, we've been talking a lot about um, making, purchasing a home in Norwalk affordable, or we can't make that happen, but um, we understand that the banks don't really lend as easily for condominiums versus apartments. Let's just call them rentals and apartments as opposed to multifamily units. But I would really like to advocate that it be investigated that these units, however many there be, whether it's two hundred and four or whatever the number is, that the developer really look to making these condominiums for purchase. Thank you.
Anything else?
Or, or at least the townhomes.
Right. Yep, I, I was gonna add that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. If, if it's possible to do both, I don't know if banks lend to that, but.
Yeah, it could be a hybrid.
Yeah, good idea.
All right, I'm gonna uh, call uh, the question. Um, let's do a roll call, Steve. This is uh, uh, to uh, approve uh, uh, the public um, excuse me, the public hearing and uh, the peer review.
Sure, um, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mister Pachas?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mister Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Mister Bryce?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
And Mister Shulman?
Yes. All right, uh, Attorney Sachi, in terms of uh, the date for the uh, public hearing, um, uh, I guess you'll be um, in contact with um, um, Mister Kleppen. Uh, I think between the two of you, you can set uh, the date.
Um, thank you, Mister Chairman. I, I think you're absolutely correct. I, we anticipate having the designers who review consultants report in within the next few days. So I would suspect that um, since that will be delayed a bit, uh, July nineteen was likely not possible. But I see no reason why we could not move forward on the second of, of August. But I will coordinate with Mister Kleppen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Okay, um, moving along on uh, our agenda, we have twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine LM Luna Latina Lounge, twenty-nine Wall Street. This is a request for uh, live music.
What's your manner?
So uh, Mister Shulman, I did not um, we didn't ask that the applicant come. Essentially, these are typical live music applications that you guys see. Uh, restaurants uh, look to add live music. They submit a noise report that shows that they comply with the noise ordinance. Um, and then they go before you for approval. So Luna Lounge has done that. Um, they've submitted the noise report, which includes levels that the music needs to be kept at, and in doing so, they'll comply with the noise ordinance.
Okay. Questions uh, for uh, the staff?
One question about, um, oh, sorry, Galen, go ahead.
You're, you're muted, Galen.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve it and.
Uh, sorry, hopefully a quick question. Um, I, I wasn't able to parse from this document if this measurement was taken with the windows open or closed or if our requirements uh, uh, require windows to be closed during live music.
Yes, so we, we require that all door, doors and windows be closed.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
We have a uh, motion. Is there a second to the motion? Mister Bryce has uh, seconded. Uh, any questions or comments? All right, if not, we'll do it with a show of hands. Sorry, Darius, you're gonna have to show your face. Uh, in order for us to have a show of hands. We have a motion uh, to uh, prove. Uh, all those in favor, just raise your hands. Uh, it's unanimous.
Okay, my computer's just updated.
Oh, thank you.
It's a hassle to just log back and, yeah.
Okay, uh, next item. Uh, O five dash eighteen SPR Sono TOD LLC. Uh, this is one Chestnut Street. This is a, a standard uh, request for a bond release, which means that the work has uh, has been uh, completed uh, to the satisfaction of uh, the staff. Uh, any further comments, uh, Brian or Steve?
No, staff's been out and inspected. Um, the site's pretty buttoned up.
Okay, motion to uh, approve the uh, release of their bond?
Tammy, I'll make the motion, Lou.
Uh, Tammy makes the motion, JJ seconded. Uh, again, I think we can, we can do this with a show of hands. Uh, all those in favor? Again, uh, unanimous?
I have to abstain.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Richard. My apologies. Uh, we have one abstention. Um, uh, E is um, O six dash eighteen SP subdivision. Uh, thirty-six forty-eight Aiken Preserve LLC, West Rocks Road, also request for a bond release. Um, I'm not uh, familiar with that uh, project. Brian?
Yeah, so this was a conservation subdivision approved a few years ago. So essentially, they, you know, typical, uh, typical conservation subdivision is uh, mostly comprised of single family homes on a smaller lot. Um, so they've completed their project. All the homes are built. They're all CO'd. Um, so no longer need to hold on to their uh, their uh, erosion control bond.
Okay, these are, this is the uh, property that formerly belonged to um, uh, the Catholic Church off uh, Aiken Street?
Right.
Okay. Motion to approve? Uh, Hector uh, has made uh, the motion. Is there a second? And uh, Galen, Galen and others have seconded. Again, let's uh, do this with a show of hands. Uh, all those in favor? And this time it is unanimous. Okay, um, next uh, item is a discussion of uh, twenty twenty-three dash nineteen R slash M Planning and Zoning Commission zoning text amendment uh, for a complete rewrite of uh, the zoning regulations and map amendment uh, for uh, complete rezoning of the entire city. Um, I'd like, uh, it's eight thirteen, so it's fairly uh, early. Um, I'd like to start the conversation regarding um, the uh, upzoning of um, the single family residential uh, areas. Would someone like to start?
I'd like to start.
Richard?
Yes, I'm, I'm really glad that we're doing this tonight because um, you know, I feel that the public and um, staff has um, a need to know what direction the wind is blowing in as far as the commission is concerned. Um, which leads me into something that I, I wanted to say um, in the last two meetings that we had, but I didn't have an opportunity to do so. Um, and that has to do with a um, quote that I've seen in the newspapers and bandied around a number of times from our chairman um, about how we are the ones that make the decision and we're the only ones that make the decision um, on this uh, zoning rewrite. And I thought the context in which it was being printed and, and, and spoken about was totally out of context because my memory of that comment was when somebody else um, questioned whether all of this was coming from the governor or other parts of Hartford or pressure from the mayor. And I think that our chairman's comment that that type of pressure was irrelevant because we are the ones that make the decision was appropriate. And unfortunately, taken out of context that the last. And unfortunately, taken out of context that the last two public hearings. Um, so I'm sure that everybody is at the fireworks, which we also got accused of having a hearing on the same time as. Um, but I just wanted to say that. Um, my, my. What I do wanna say, um, and why I think it's important that um, everybody knows um, as best as, or as much as possible, what direction the wind is blowing. Um. I received, as we all did today, um, a really long. Um. Very uh, detailed memo from staff having to do. Um, with two families, changes from one family to two family and. And attempting to answer all the questions that uh, were raised at the hearing regarding parking and. Diminution of value, et cetera. Um, so it, it made me feel it was even more important that I at least say that I am. Um. Even though he was the only councilman who voted against me, I'm in, in. Agreement with what Mr. Bonifant had to say, that the entire prospect of upzoning should be. Um, removed uh, at this time. So that's what I have to say.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, could you clarify that last statement? Are you? Uh, in opposition?
I am against changing the single-family zones into two-family zones.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Um, I, I, I too wanna, I, I wanna thank Richard um, for bringing clarification to your statement. Um, at the um, the, the beginning of the public statements, basically stating what our role was in here. In, in this commission and not bending to the pressures of outside forces. Thank you for that, Richard, and thank you for that, um, Chairman Schuman. Um, I also remember the, the, the discussion that led up to that statement. And so I just wanna put it on record that um, we're all, you know. Clear on what the focus is.
Let me, let me um, share my own, my own feelings about this uh, as well. Um, I think that um, an awful lot. Of what we heard from the public uh, during the last two meetings. Um, was born uh, out of fear. And that uh, a lot of it. Uh, simply was not factual. Um, and I mean, the, the, the staff memo uh, 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 addressed some of that. Um, but I also feel. Um, that um. Uh, as um, as Richard does uh, on this. That uh, we should um. Eliminate. Um, the uh, uh, upzoning of one-family. Uh, neighborhoods to um. Uh, allow two-family, um, two-family units. Uh, I have uh, walked. Uh, virtually every neighborhood that uh, is proposed to be rezoned. And um. It just doesn't look to me as if. Uh, it's appropriate um. To uh, allow that uh, rezoning, number one. Uh, number two. Uh, I think uh, the value in terms of increased uh, density. Uh, to the extent uh, there'll be one. Is really quite small and um, will be. Uh, accomplished over a very long period uh, of time. I don't share people's fears that. Uh, developers are gonna, on a wholesale basis, go and buy homes and turn them into two families. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we should allow for the possibility of. Uh, of that happening, um. Uh, you know, I, I, I uh, do agree that um, there is a kind of un. Uh, spoken agreement. Uh, between uh, municipality and its residents. Um, I mean, I remember when I ran a bus system. It was important to me, and I think it was important to the system. That the bus that ran on your street. Um, today would be running on your street tomorrow and the day after that, and the day after that. And um, this is not so different. Uh, uh, from, from that. And so, and I'm not proposing, by the way, that we take any action this evening, just that we. Uh, have a preliminary opportunity to discuss this. Um, and um. Uh, so I feel that while. The consultants didn't make a mistake. Um. Uh, you know, I, I, I think what they, what they are suggesting is rational. It makes sense to have. Density closer to the inner-city areas of the city, closer to where there's public uh, transportation. Um, but when you move from. The planning world where they are, to the real world where we find ourselves. Um. Uh, I, 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 I think, I think that's different. I think it makes it uh, uh, different. Um, and I sort of would like to keep faith. With uh, the residents of the city on uh, on uh, this issue. Even though I disagree with, with much of what was said. Galen? You're, you're muted again.
I didn't wanna interrupt you, but so many of the people were just frightened. And I think that if they understood. First of all, that there'd have to be two off-street parking places for every. Unit that was. Developed in this way, so that there'd be four off-street parking spaces, which would make it easier for. The police to enforce neighborhood parking. You know, parking seemed to be a big issue for them, and they didn't seem to understand that more parking would be available, number one. Number two, they didn't seem to understand that sixty percent of the two-family houses that exist today are. Owner-occupied. And, you know, Brian Baker discovered that for us, and we now know that, but the public has not been told that. And number three. Um. I don't think they understood that it increases the value of their property. That a lot of the properties will never be able to be made into two-family houses, or because there, there isn't enough space. There isn't enough space for parking, et cetera, et cetera. But where they are, where you could convert it into a two-family house. You will be selling your property for way more money than you would be selling it for if, just to put it on the market as is. I think if people understood those three things, they'd feel very differently. And I don't know how we communicate these things to people. You know, I, but I hate to. You know, we heard over and over the same thing, repeated, 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 which is largely people responding to Facebook posts. That say, come out, oh my God, oh my God, and then they all come out and go, oh my God, like, oh my God, and they don't really. Understand what's being proposed clearly. So.
Yeah, and I would. I would add on with Galen. I think there's definitely some compromise here, or some ways to potentially not throw the ba, whole baby out with the bathwater to, so to speak. You know, the investor line is interesting, but people, investors are also buying single-family homes, so that starts to fall apart for me. Um, the parking thing I get, so where that's most egregious, most felt and most heard, we've heard for years about this, like, parking. Residence pass, it hasn't come to fruition. I could understand pulling back that area, I mean, in East Norwalk until the parking solution comes into place. But I, at this point, don't feel the need to throw everything out the window. Uh, because I think we've talked over and over about this notion of this missing middle. And we're completely, I think, abandoning that as a concept, which I have yet to see any sort of. Um. Evidence to abandon. So I'm with you, Lou, on looking and, and seeing what makes sense, or where, where, where does it make sense to trim, but I would hate to. Um, wholesale, just say at this point in time, if you have a single-family home, a duplex can't move in next door, like. I'm not in favor of this notion, and even so, I'm not even in favor of this notion that like renters are these evil humans. Um, that gets made out to be, I'm a sort of. Uh, uh, it's an unfortunate characterization uh, that I don't know what to do with, but it seems like over time, or in the near term with. Either the parking stuff getting sorted out, better enforcement, which I know cities looking into, like, these things come together to make a much better. Picture over time, but I don't think that means we start at zero today. That's sort of where I'm netting out.
Thanks, Nick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone, is there anyone else who wants to speak who hasn't spoken yet?
Yeah, I'd like to, oh, Tammy, sorry.
Bryce and then, and then Tammy.
Yeah, I'd like to build off the uh, missile mid, uh, middle, missing middle housing. There we go. Um, from the uh, assessment that uh, Brian had provided, and I, I do hope that gets posted for the public as well. Um, of being at like six point four percent of uh, the city's. Um. Current zoning is a, a very low number compared to the, the multifamily mixed use and uh, uh, single-family. And so. Uh, being able to ride a bit more in that category, you, you know, to, to the points that have been made before about trimming things back a bit. But making sure that we are able to fill in some of that, that middle gap there and uh, give some more homeownership opportunities. And to be able to give more housing units available for those, so uh, yeah, I just wanted to flag that as well and emphasize that point.
Okay. JJ, I'm sorry I missed you. Um, uh, your background is yellow. I didn't see the.
Oh. Okay.
Tammy and then, and then JJ.
Okay, thank you. Uh, JJ, go ahead. Your hand was up before mine.
Okay, you know what? You go ahead, Tammy, because what I'm going to say is probably going to wrap up everybody's comments into it.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Brian and, and or Steve, thank you for the memo that you sent to us. Um, I'm still working through it. Um. And I don't know if all of you know, but I am a residential real estate agent. I've been one here in the city for twenty years. So I think I probably have a fair amount of firsthand experience in selling neighborhoods in Norwalk. Selling single-family homes, selling condominiums, and I do rentals. So I kind of run the gamut. And. I understand. The residents who came out and spoke at the meeting. Of course, they're afraid. Their house is their big investment. They like the neighborhood that they bought in because. One, that's where they chose to live. Two, it's probably where they can afford to live, because most people buy where they can afford to live. And. I will say, from my experience. If somebody's looking for a single-family home, that's what they wanna buy. If they can only afford a multifamily home and they're not buying it as an investment. That's what they'll choose, but. In general, multifamily houses do not increase the value of a single-family house to have one next door. A single-family house next to a single-family house would increase in value. And people, buyers, definitely look to those things when they're choosing a neighborhood. If you want a more urban lifestyle. You might choose a different neighborhood than if you want a more suburban or even a more rural neighborhood. And Norwalk. Has great distinct different neighborhoods. Silvermine, West Norwalk, East Norwalk, Cranberry, South Norwalk, Rowayton, Central Norwalk, all very distinct neighborhoods. And people pick the, one of those based on what they like. They don't come and say, oh, show me anything in Norwalk in my price range, or you go out and you look. And then they kind of narrow down which neighborhood they like and why they like it, whether they want that slightly more walkable urban, or whether they wanna live on an acre of land. So. I think that. It's great for us to want to advocate for units that are, quote, more affordable. Banks aren't necessarily going to lend. If you have a condominium-style two-family house and you're trying to sell one side of it. The bank wants to know, well, who's gonna live in the other side? And that isn't necessarily as affordable, or the bank won't lend to it. So I think those are things that, you know, we all as. Common people out there don't necessarily have all that experience with, and this is what I've been talking about with these big apartment buildings, and let's just call them that. They're apartment buildings. They're not multifamily houses. They're apartment buildings. Norwalk did a great job in the nineteen seventies and eighties. They added a lot of condominium stock. Where people that don't need a whole big house, maybe they only want two bedrooms, they could buy a condominium, and there are. A lot of different price ranges of condominiums in Norwalk, and. This um, memo that you wrote kind of says, oh, well, condominiums are of a lower value because the average was three seventy. Well. They cost less because they're smaller. They have shared walls. They have common property, so it's not disparaging to say that they're three hundred and seventy thousand dollar average. They cost less in general because they're a lot smaller than a house. They're, they cost less to maintain. Um, so. I have a lot of other comments about this, and if you just bear with me, I just can look through, um. And I think the zoning office and the applicants that we've received over the last ten years, they only wanna make rental buildings that, and that's. Maybe that's something that we as planning and zoning can have an impact over. Um, we certainly have rented them. Uh, I mean, these buildings, they fill up, and yes, they have a few affordable units. But in general, they're kind of high-end rentals, and they're not offering the lower end of rentals. Before the pandemic, if you would go on the multiple listing in Norwalk, you would find about a hundred and seventy. Available apartments to rent, and they would range from a studio on Washington Street for around nine hundred dollars to. Something larger, say, in Ledgebrook for maybe three thousand dollars. But everything went up in the pandemic about thirty percent, twenty-five to thirty percent. And the inventory went way down. And if it weren't for the pandemic, quite frankly, Norwalk probably wouldn't have the low inventory situation that it does. So the pandemic drove a lot of people out of New York City, just. As broad-sweeping generalization, they came out in hordes because they were living in tiny little places and they couldn't do what they wanted to do. In terms of going to restaurants, going to the theater, going to the movies, all of those things were shut down, and if they had a little kid. They were pulling their hair out because they were trying to work from home and their place was too small, so they all came out, and the millennials delayed purchasing for years. And so they added and exacerbated to the problem, and then after two thousand and eight, the crash. The housing stocks just weren't built, and, and this letter points to that. But also, we haven't been building more housing because Norwalk is kind of getting built out. Guess what? There aren't a lot of just empty available lots. So all of these things are coming into play. But the people that live here now, they, if they bought a single-family house in a single-family neighborhood, that's what they want to maintain. And they're paying higher property taxes than they have been in years. Those, you know, numbers never go down. Um, and just another. Um, comment to one of the paragraphs about the Consumer Price Index and buying a home and the cost of, of two thousand seven hundred dollars a month. Well, if you can own a home and gain equity for twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. That's about the price of a two-bedroom in any one of these buildings that we've just approved for rent. One Cemetery Street, a two-bedroom is gonna end up in that price range. The ones up at um, Merritt Seven, they're all. Two thousand plus, and they're five hundred square feet for the two thousand uh, dollar a month unit, so. They're not affordable, but if you can find a house for that, then you'd be doing a lot better because you would be building equity. Um. And then. Um. One question was asked in this report, why less than half of all the properties eligible for a two-family residence can constructed? Not constructed, it should say, a two-family residence. Well, they're not popular because. People in general wanna come out and live in the suburbs and own their own home. They don't want to own a two-family home. They don't want to be a landlord, so. And, and they're also harder to get financing for if somebody does want to do it. And I think there's a big difference between. Somebody intentionally building a two-family home with two doors on either side, and there were a ton of them built in the nineteen sixties in Norwalk, and they're rather unappealing. Versus an older house that was intentionally built in the nineteen twenties and thirties. Either a two or three-family house, two or three stories, and it was, the parents live downstairs, the kids that got married live upstairs. And grandma might have lived on one of those floors as well. Very different situation. So I think. We have to. Look at this from a, a broad picture and then down to the narrow, and how can we? Look at this from a a broad picture and then down to the narrow and how can we affect it? And I. I feel a lot of compassion for the people that spoke that don't want to have their neighborhood upzoned. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
JJ?
Yes, okay, so my comment is basically. It's it's a blanket comment that's going to address like some of the things that I've heard. At the the comments from the the public as well as comments from board members. The 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 notion that no neighborhood ever changes is a fairy tale.
Yes.
It's a fairy tale. Every neighborhood goes through transition. Whether good, bad, or in the middle, they're going to go through something. And to think that, you know, this neighborhood north is never going to transition into anything else is going to stay as. You know, storybook as they think it is, I think is unrealistic and it's also unfair. To the rest of the city that has been carrying the burden of change. Now, having said that, I do appreciate that what Tammy said is that when people buy into the neighborhood, they have an expectation. Right? That this is, I pay six hundred thousand dollars for this house. I know my neighbor to the left, I know my neighbor to the right and I and. The day that they they carry carry me out in a in a coffin is going to stay that way. Well, that might be the expectation, but that is not always going to be the reality. And one of the takeaways that I had from the public hearing is that people talked about family. I raised my family here. I lived here for fifty years. I know everyone here were all like family. Well, when your children go away to college and they come back, don't you want to have your family near? And so having versatile housing, different types of housing stock makes that possible. As well as your senior mother or father, you you do not want to ship off to a nursing home. Okay, that is, that's the diversity of housing. Now, I I am not in no way supporting a high rise in West Norwalk. No, or nor am I, you know, you know, supporting a massive condo complex. Where there is, you know, this little cross of land, that doesn't make any sense. But I think the the proposal of, you know, you know, a two family, you know, or. It it, I mean, that is just like the 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 smallest compromise, you know, to create more housing options. That I just don't understand became the boogeyman. And I I really would hate for that to be tossed to the side, that baby to be tossed out with the bathwater. Because people are screaming about, you know, the fear of renters. Moving to their neighborhoods. I mean, I find that really insulting. Especially because I know a lot of renters and they pay a lot of money. And the rent that they pay includes their taxes and they have less of a le- less of an energy footprint. So they say that your property value is going to go down because you now have two renters on your on your block. I I don't know, I just cannot connect that to be true unless the unless the building is completely run down. Which I don't think West Norwalk neighborhoods would would allow to happen. And nor would the renters do, you know, I they they, I I just can't see someone throwing their trash out the out on your yard and not maintaining. Their property just because they rent. So that's that's the second thing. The third thing is, is that this is a historical statement I'm going to make. We got into this problem with decreased housing because of this very issue. That people want to protect, you know, the 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 lines of their neighborhood. And don't want to allow more people to have access in. Now, when I say more people, I don't mean a horde load, a bus full of people. I mean, just like, you know, a family here, a family there. You know, those who could afford to live in the neighborhood. Yes, if it's enough scale neighborhood, most likely they're going to pay upscale rent. And if they pay upscale rent, most likely they're going to go through a vetting process. So I I I think it's a win win. So um I just want to go on record as saying that, you know. The whole country is growing. Connecticut is growing. And if we can make changes incrementally, as Lou said, not all at once. You know, that's not going to happen. But incrementally, allowing diverse housing in the neighborhoods and not putting the whole burden on one neighborhood. Would benefit the entire city. You will be able to maintain family neighborhoods as well as retain your value. As well as attract new people to the to the to the city. That's all I'm going to say about that.
Um, Hector, did you have your hand up?
I did, but um JJ basically said whatever I wanted to to say and. It's everything, but she mentioned like the boogeyman of prices and at one point, um, everyone was mischaracterizes. Mixed characterizing renters uh that they don't have skin in the game when it comes to living in Norwalk. But many of those renters, actually, they have their businesses here, they go to our school. So everyone has as much skin as people that that own. So um, there's been that fear campaign that I think we've all seen and can testify to. Uh, but like she says, that changes have to be coming slowly. Then, I mean, we're planning for the future uh and people are failing to see that, that they think that. Everything is going to happen all all at once, but um we're going for the long haul here.
Thank you, Hector. Steve, you had your hand up?
Yeah, and I'm not going to interject in your conversation at all. I I do want to, tomorrow I'm going to email out. I I made some. I wa- I went back and I looked at the last couple of P O C Ds to see if what they talked about for housing. I'll I'll email out those segments tomorrow because a couple of the plans are up on the website. But I you you go back thirty years and they're having the same conversation and nothing was done. So it's just just to find that out.
Okay, Chapin?
Sorry, I couldn't find you unmute. Um, one of the things that staff was able to pull together was a uh listing of um. Multifamily or two family housing that was not owner occupied. Are we able to get similar information for single family uh housing that is not owner occupied?
Yeah, I I think I have that Chapin. I can I can distribute that.
Thank you. Yeah, because to an earlier point, um, you know, single family houses are rented as well. When we were first looking to move to the area. That was one of the the things we saw a good amount of as we were as we were looking. Um, the the other thing I wanted to call attention to briefly is, uh, you know, the the map seemed to be the main uh point of contention and discussion throughout the evening. Um, and it is important and we do need to give it attention. Um, I also want to make sure at least the same, if not maybe more attention also goes into the regulations. Um, yeah, there was some good feedback that we got as well on the regulations. Um, I I have a lot of feedback, but um it won't fit into tonight, so I won't chew everyone's ear off tonight.
Galen?
I just have two two really quick things. First of all, I JJ is so right. Neighborhoods change. All neighborhoods change. Uh, I. I could give you examples, but all neighborhoods change over time and that's absolutely, absolutely correct. Uh, when I moved to Norwalk, the big boogeyman was all the condos. Everyone was up in arms, all these condos, there's people living in the condos have no skin on the game. They don't pay enough taxes. They put their kids in our schools, all the same. You know, now we've forgotten about the condos. They turn out to be not that big a deal. Also, a friend of mine lives in a neighborhood with a two family houses and it's a lovely, lovely, well-kept neighborhood. You know, there's a two family house, several single family houses, another two family house, and it couldn't be a more. Pleasant, well-kept neighborhood. So the idea that a two family houses somehow are less. Uh, I think is a. It is a problem. And nobody's changing Silvermine and West Norwalk, you know, that's, you know, a lot of the city is. You know, they're talking about the urban corridor within two miles of of Route One. And in the hospital area where a lot of people work in the hospital. You know, it's not really a massive change and some of the people that came and talked about. How two family houses would ruin their neighborhood come from places that are zoned as two family neighborhoods already. One person for sure, because he lives in the same street as my grandson, who lives in a two family house. So anyway. That's.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, especially when thinking of the two family. The other thing that could be an interesting conversation at some point in time is. ADUs and looking at those regulations again, we had made them fairly restrictive, especially not in the front and other places like that. And so something to just consider, we should consider is, you know, if we're going to pull back two family homes in some places, does it make sense for ADUs? To go back for all the reasons that JJ perfectly articulated. Um, so just something to keep in mind.
Anybody else?
Mister Chairman, I have, if you want to have the spreadsheet, I kind of put together for kind of picking up on what Mister Bryce was talking about. That's all right. I could. Unless you want to continue on with the um upzoning conversation first.
I actually, I thought we were going to take yours on under director's comments, but it doesn't.
That's fine, I'll be quiet.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. Am I correct that uh everyone who who's wanted to speak has spoken? Uh, on this topic? Obviously, we're going to have to continue this conversation. Okay, if not, then no, Steve, it's perfectly all right to put that up.
Okay, can you guys see that?
Can you condense it and make it just a little bit larger?
Lo- larger, okay.
Yeah, just a little bit.
All right, so. I kind of put at least, and this is not by any means meant to be the complete list. But I kind of started putting things in in buckets, so to speak. So we have what uh I'm going to kind of lump in is what I'll call more on the minor edit side, which would be. Um, typos, punctuation, grammar. I think the use table is pretty, uh, you know, we heard some things about certain. Uses, we staff had flagged a bunch of those beforehand that we knew they just got categorized incorrectly. There were a few more that about a couple with the industrial zones that just got labeled incorrectly that should have been carried over from the study that was done. Uh, we've captured those. And then there were a few related to like, uh, which we talked about at a prior meeting was like the bed and breakfast. Um, we're still working through um Corporation Council's comments on that. And so we'll have, I think we can get the that whole minor edit. Grouping wrapped up um with recommendations back to you next week. That's our our plan. Um, and kind of thinking about um kind of sliding over to the left, looking at the schedule. Kind of laying out where applications go and timeline. And again, I for for what the chairman said that, you know, we're not. Holding fast to any particular date and time, but just kind of seeing what we have. Application wise on the agenda and how we fit in the discussion of the the regulation rewrite into that. I think I at a meeting on the nineteenth, we should have the ability to, you know, obviously continue this conversation, but then. Um, go over the edits that we proposed related to the use table, punctuation, grammar, um, also like with the. You know, going back for the the two remaining and perhaps we need to do a third single family zone, Brian and I'll look at that again. Um, putting in the lot area requirement, I know that's was been a big cup topic of conversation early on, so we'll we'll add that in there. And then I think each subsequent we up subsequent meeting of yours, we can add another topic to go over. Um, because there are, obviously, you started having the upzoning conversation. And then we did get some very specific property um requests to get included in zone A or B or C, whatever zone they wanted to get into. So we could tackle all those at a a singular meeting. Uh, there'll there'll also be conversations related to uh requests related to the Norden site or the Manresa site. So how do we handle those? Uh, you know, because those both those properties are pretty unique and should kind of get their own um consideration. And then there's a whole slew of um technical issues that we need to work through. Some of those we've already started on. And we've gotten some correspondences from like attorneys and architects about different things. Also, they uh. We talked about changing, you know, do what do we do it? What do we do related to sustainability per our meeting last week? And then also with the E V T Z zone, we have to revise the solar amenity already just because of the proposed change within the regulations. Um, and just thinking through now that we've had a couple of different applications in that zone. How do we change up the point system to make it a little more, you know, appropriate and are there different amenity? Categories that we can add. Staff came up with a list, so we're going to work through those in the next week or so as well and have um. Something out for you to consider as well as as the conversation goes forward.
Steve, uh, assuming we have the time for our next meeting, why don't we tackle those minor edits? And why don't you have pick uh something else in case we have more time? Uh, that we might also try to tackle. Because minor edits, we might be able to just reach agreement uh and take that off the table. And the more we can take off the table, the more the more time we have to discuss the uh thornier issues as we have tonight.
Yeah, and the other aspect. Go ahead, Nick, sorry.
I was saying, can we add, uh, and I think Tammy's points about condos is a good one. It comes up often. I don't know if that's in the technical section or something else of. If there's anything we can do to do that. I think over and over, we've heard there's not anything, but I don't know if we always wanted to. Have a conversation.
Nick, I just, I actually just got an email from Corporation Council. I'd ask that question. I haven't gone through it yet because it's a lot of. Legal jargon that I have to read, but.
Okay, cool.
Going to make two sense of it. I'll let you guys know.
Uh, I think it's a good point, so I'm making sure we got them.
Yeah, and the the only other thing I would add is whether you and you guys could think about this. Do you want to do? I know July is a horrible month for anything, but the idea of a a a special meeting in August, you might want to think about one in September just to. The the good thing is the application volume is not crazy right now, but. The, you know, the two, the two pre preliminary discussions you had tonight, we we told both of them, let's. Factor in for twenty minutes and forty minutes after that period, they're still talking. So it's like. We, nothing seems to ever go as briefly as we plan on, so.
Well, Liz was doing a full blown presentation because she wanted it, she wanted us to vote tonight, basically.
Yeah, that one wasn't going to be voting on anyway, so I'm I I don't know why they went as in depth as they did, but.
Yeah, that that solar panels, little solar panels. Powering the plugins for your cellphone. Our solar is.
Oh, that's, that's, that's nonsense. It may may well be that we can't force them to do solar, I. And I don't know the answer to that, but you're you're absolutely right. That was.
That was ridiculous.
That was a joke.
It was a joke.
Instead of insulting. That they keep saying, oh, we're doing solar, we're doing solar.
Okay, any any more, any more discussion uh about anything having to do with.
Looks like Tammy has her hand up.
The zoning or map?
Not the zoning or map.
Then let's wait, let's wait until uh the the um comments of commissioners.
Oh, okay, it has it has to do with the application for the three seventy West Avenue.
Yeah, I would just say. You shouldn't get into any kind of merits of the application or.
Right.
If you have questions for them, just email me. I just don't, since we we're not, they're not here and you're not, it's not on the agenda. As an item right in front of us now, just got to be careful, that's all.
You know, I'd like to ask staff to do something for us. Is, should I send that to you in an email?
I don't know, that's appropriate. Go ahead.
Yeah, if you need something, yeah, that's fine.
Sure. I'm wondering if you could please give us the um the height and the number of units and the bulk of. The waypoint, the Berkeley and the one that's going in across the street. I don't know the name of. It will help us compare the size of this proposed one with what's already there.
I just know off the the top of my head, just because of how recent Pinnacle was. They were three hundred ninety three units. Um, they're six stories. Um, I'd have to look at waypoint, waypoints around the same amount, a little bit, probably a little bit less in the three hundreds, and then I'm not sharing the Berkeley.
Berkeley, I think is the smallest density wise, I think.
What's, what's the new one that's being built called?
The Pinnacle?
That's the Pinnacle. Okay, thank you.
They're modest. They just named it the Pinnacle.
Yeah.
Okay, let's um move, we've got two sets of uh minutes uh to approve. Um, for the uh. Oh, I'm sorry, we have three sets of minutes to approve. Let's start with uh June seventh. If you remember, if you were here on June seven. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Um, I think that. Uh, Richard. Richard moved Darius, you want a second?
Second, yes.
Okay. Darius, is there something else you wanted to say?
Oh, no, I was just seconding, yep.
Can I, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I think I've been left off the email that included those minutes. So I think this happened earlier on in May as well. So if you could just include me next time, that'd be great. I will have to abstain from these, I haven't had a chance to review them.
Well, then maybe we ought to defer the minutes until our next meeting. Not not fair to you.
Yeah, I think Chapin, I think I had a sticky on my computer to send this to you guys on Monday. And then Monday I worked from home, so that's even get read.
Okay, all right, we'll 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 deal with this at our next meeting. We'll we'll have four sets of minutes.
Apologize all.
All right.
I rescind my second.
Thank you. Comments for the director?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Tammy, you wanted to say anything?
Oh, no, my question was about the units and the bulk of the buildings and Brian partially answered it, but thank you.
Anybody else?
Fireworks start in four minutes, right?
Yeah, good luck getting there. Steve, I would like a list for all of us of each of the neighborhoods that are still on the table for upzoning. Because I think we ought to start talking about that neighborhood by neighborhood.
Yeah, some of them are like more known identifiable in terms of location, other ones are just streets off of streets, so we'll we'll come up with something or or we'll we'll figure something out that makes sense.
Okay, I appreciate that.
That's a good idea, actually.
Could that be in the form of the change in density maps that have been provided before? Or at least include those along with it, the the maps that showed like areas that.
Yeah, that'll be how I do it anyway, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments from anyone else? If not, at eight fifty seven, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And why don't we say that Chapin has moved and Hector has seconded? Our next meeting is July nineteenth?
Nope, till I second.
Um, no.
I second.
July nineteenth.
July nineteenth, sorry, I'm a month.
You're trying to get up to vacation.
You're moving it to August.
Sorry, I haven't had dinner.
Let's let's put on that agenda, Steve, a conversation about whether whether we feel we want to have a special meeting in August. Okay, with that, there's motion on the floor to adjourn.
All in favor, I'm in favor.
Galen said, all in favor, raise your hands. All right, we are adjourned, everyone have a good evening. See you on the nineteenth.
Have a good one.
Take care.
Thank you.